Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to make start to this meeting, please. Hello, everybody. You are very welcome to this meeting of the Climate Emergency Advisory Committee. My name's Katie Dye. I'm councillor of Killein Becken Seacroft and I will be chairing today's meeting. I'd like to welcome you all and I would like to welcome officers who've given up their time to come to and join us as well. And our visitors, we have visitors today from Leeds Beckett University. You are very welcome. I hope you find the meeting interesting. And so I'm going to ask if members can introduce themselves, please. We'll go around the table. And can I remind you to mute your microphone when you have finished, please? Thank you.
Good afternoon, councillor Eleanor Thompson from Geisley and Rawdon Wood.
Good afternoon, councillor Peter Carlisle, Carling Farley.
Good afternoon, everyone. Councillor Marmichalad from the Motown Amiwood Ward.
Good afternoon, everybody. Councillor Abdulhanan for Hedingley High Park Ward.
Good afternoon, councillor Adrian McCluskey from Farleigh and Worley Ward. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, we're gonna. Good afternoon. Forgot what I was gonna say now. Councillor John Tudor from Killein Becken Seacroft Ward.
Good afternoon, everyone. Councillor Jordan Bowden, Roundhay Ward.
Mike Foster, elected member for Arnsley and Robin Hood.
Afternoon, Norma Harrington from Wetherby Ward.
Good afternoon, Barry Anderson, Adlington Warfey Ward.
Thank you. And would officers like to introduce themselves as well, too, please?
Thank you. I'm Helen Graham-McClark for this afternoon's meeting.
Rachel Wainwright, policy officer in the Climate, Energy and Green Spaces team.
Thank you, everybody. So if we turn to the agenda, do you want to start, Helen, by going through the formalities?
Thank you, Chair. Under agenda item number one, there are no appeals against the refusal inspection of documents. Agenda item two, the agenda contains no exempt information. Agenda item three, there were no light items. Agenda item four, could I ask members to make any declarations they want to make at this point, please? I can't see any, so thank you. Agenda item five, we've received apologies for absence from Polly Cook, the chief officer for Climate, Energy and Green Spaces, who's done well today. And Chad Newton also won't be able to join us, he's on a course. We haven't received any apologies from members, but I guess members will join us when they're free. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Helen. So we're now moving on to item six, which is minutes of previous meetings. And we have two sets of minutes to approve today because the last meeting was a remote meeting, which makes it a consultative meeting. And the last meeting in person was in June. So shall we start with that one? We'll start with the June meeting, which you can find on your, in your pack on page seven. As always, I'll go through the pages one by one. If you have any matters that you'd like to correct or any matters arising, can you indicate, please, as I go through each page? So for the sixth of June meeting, first item is page seven. Page eight. So one item from me on page eight, in the third paragraph. I made a recommendation that people encourage the Climate and Green Spaces team to attend youth summits. If you're involved in planning any, I do encourage you to do that if you've still got youth summits coming up. I know that we've had them two hours and they've always had a very popular stall. And then there's one more from me, but I'll bring that up a little bit later. That's regarding item eight. So page nine. Page 10. Page 11. And page 12. Okay, fabulous. So we'll agree those as a true record. And that brings us on to the minutes from the last remote meeting, which was last month, 16th of October. And they start on page 13. Anything on page 13? 14. 15. 16. 17. And 18. Okay, so we've agreed those then. Thank you very much, everybody. And so the next item I want to look at is updates from the working groups. We've had two working groups that met since the last meeting. So the first one is the Community and Business and Energy, which met on the 6th of November. So are you able to briefly update us on that, councillor Shazad, please?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to all those people that attended the working group on business and communities. We had a very interesting meeting and we had Leeds 2023 over to tell us what they've been doing. During all the events that were taking place for Leeds 2023, we had Emma Beverley. And she provided us with an update on how and what challenges she faced and how they managed to try and keep all the events as sustainable as possible, keeping in mind our climate agenda. And they faced quite a few challenges. Obviously, the production teams had challenges where, obviously, you had generators, which were obviously fossil fuel, generated with either diesel or petrol. And then you had, obviously, these events taking place at places where you didn't have any connectivity to electricity or any other means. So they did try and look at sustainable, reusable, you know, batteries that would work. But obviously, in certain places, things did not happen. A lot of the, like, for example, we had the barn down at Woodhouse Moor and that was all done sustainably and everything there from that barn will be reused elsewhere and it'll be set up. So they briefed us on loads of these items and, but they did tell us one of those things, since we got Gary in the room anyhow, was getting people on transport, getting people to events and the timing of events and the lack of public transport, because that then adds to our carbon uptake. Because obviously, people are using vehicles and cars and travelling on their own. And the carbon footprint obviously increases of the event because obviously, they're travelling there. And the times of events and how people can get there. And so that's something we could maybe look at, obviously, as a city, because this is not just Leeds 2023, in future events, how we can make it a lot easier for people to either use public transport or have the transport available for people to get to such events that are taking place. And also, we were interested that now we've got a setup in Leeds, which is the Sustainable Arts in Leeds and a lot of the groups and obviously Leeds City Council have subscribed to this. And so all future events and all art networks can subscribe to this and hopefully make sure all the art or any productions, and I think the Playhouse and everybody else is heavily involved with them. And we were promised, I think Rachel's in the room, that we might get a tour of one of the events down at the Playhouse. So hopefully, I'm looking forward to that. And I think it'll be open to all CAC members. So that was the first part of the meeting. To keep it brief, we had one on the carbon labelling, which is part of our Leeds food strategy. We had Neil Boyle and Claire Dalton Nobson. And they were telling us how they are looking at new forms of labelling to make sure, to see how we can decide on what foods we eat and how we, and what impact that they are having on our environment. And that was a very interesting discussion. Next year, hopefully, we'll be trialling some of them. They're obviously working with the university as well. So we're hoping, our first trial is going to be at the Temple Newsom Cafe and hopefully that should go pretty well. And so that was all we had. And I'm gonna keep it brief because I don't want to take up too much of your time, Chair. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate that. And I really appreciate you chairing the group. I thought it was a really interesting meeting. And we can maybe come back to the food labelling when we discuss the food strategy later on today. But I think the points you've made particularly about transport are really valid and something that we need to take on board. So thank you very much. Thank you for that. And so I'm going to update on the Infrastructure Planning and Buildings Working Group, which has met. And that's the one I chair. So the substantive item that we had on that agenda was an update on the Home Upgrade Grant. And the idea behind that is that the council's got funding to upgrade homes that are not connected to the gas network. And so we discussed issues around that, really. The main one being, how do we encourage uptake to make sure that we get every penny of that spent? And then we had a briefing note that's going to go to all councils. I don't think it's been sent out yet. I don't recall receiving a copy myself, but it will be sent out to all members with information about who's eligible and how we can encourage that to be, to have a good uptake, sorry. And so we just made a few suggestions about amending that briefing note. So look out for that. And I think we talked about ideas of things that we could all do that, you know, I'm sure we'll be very keen to encourage people to make use of that. And then we discussed the update to the Energy Act, which Rachel shared some information with us. And we talked about how that might affect us as a committee. And then the last item was the Forward Plan. And we talked about things that people attending that working group would like to see moving forwards in terms of agenda items. And I know, Rachel, you are currently arranging a meeting with the chairs of all four of the working groups. And that's going to happen early next month. And we can look at all the suggestions that have come from people in terms of agenda items moving forward. So if you didn't have a chance to feed into any of the working group agendas and there are things that you'd like us to particularly examine, please let myself and Rachel know and we can make sure that they get considered. Is there anything else you wanted to raise on those subgroups, Rachel?
It was also just a note that we've got currently. I've been in conversation with both councillor Carlisle and councillor Anderson because we've got, we're coming around to the next round of, we've done like a full cycle as such of the working groups. So we're just arranging and confirming dates for the Economy and Finance Working Group and the Biodiversity, Food and Waste Working Group. So these will be taking place properly from mid-January onwards. So yeah, obviously, you'll receive invitations to those, as we agreed before, for the main working groups to receive those. So they'll be coming out shortly.
Brilliant. Thank you very much. Anybody else want to make any comments about working groups? As always, I encourage your attendance and I really appreciate the discussions that we have. I think it really helps us to move this agenda forwards. Okay, in that case, we are on to item seven, which is the Open Forum. And disappointingly, we don't have anybody coming to address us. So I will ask you all if you have people who are working anything to do with climate in your ward. So it might be, we've had schools, we've had organisations, we've had different groups with different agenda items that have a climate kind of basis to them, come along and talk to us. So please do encourage people. It's very rare we don't have anybody, but unfortunately, we don't. However, I do have a few updates on people who have been and talked to us in the past. So I'm going to go through those. So this is a good opportunity to do that. So the first one relates to Suzanne and Trudy, who came to see us in the June meeting. I said I would come back to that when we were going through the minutes. So following their visit to the Open Forum, myself and one of the council officers met with them. And we discussed some of the issues that they'd raised in their open forum submission. And you might remember some of the things that they talked about. And they talked about the fact that some of the things that we as a council do when we consult with different groups could be improved. And we recognise that. And we had a discussion about the kind of things that they would like to see change. We had to say that we continued to disagree on the science of climate change. And that was, that was a point at which in the meeting we all agreed that we would have to continue to disagree on. But we did say that we would look at some of the points that they made about the way that consultations happen. Because it's important for us to make sure that we are genuinely consulting with all the residents of Leeds. And if there are people who feel that that's not happening, then I think it's up to all of us to examine the things that we do and how we can be genuinely inclusive and make sure that people really are consulted about decisions. And I know it's something that often comes up in different committees. And so one of the things that I propose to do with the consent of this committee is to write to senior officers just to remind them that when consultations happen, that they are inclusive and they are accessible and they use language that people can access. If you're in agreement, I will do that. I can't see anybody not in agreement. So I will do that and just say that it's a really important part of both members and officers' work, that we are genuinely inclusive and just as a reminder to continue to do that. So thank you to Suzanne and Trudy for agreeing to attend the meeting. And then some updates. Briefly, we had one from somebody who came to talk to us about use of hydroelectricity. And Rachel has responded to that one, saying that that is currently being looked into with colleagues from flood risk management. And then you might remember, we had one about rooftop wildflower gardens, creating aerial paths across the city, which clearly is really important. And Rachel is currently looking into that with different departments in terms of how do we advise the buildings across the city? Because a lot of them are not in our ownership. So it's not an easy thing to do, but it's something that we're certainly looking at. And then you might remember John Illingworth with some concerns and some very technical questions for us. And Rachel has responded to him with some very technical answers. So somebody's obviously been working hard behind the scenes on that one. But just to assure you that everybody who attended has had a response and work is carrying on. So any questions on that? Okay, so that moves us on to item eight. So item eight, we have super news from the Carbon Disclosure Project. I highlighted a little bit on page 19 that I think spells it out really well, that in 2022, we were one of only 121 cities that received an A grade. And that's a worldwide number. And then the grading is updated every year. And each year, more stringent action is required. So it's just with enormous pleasure, enormous pleasure, that I want to say that we've received an A grade again. In your pack is a really detailed report. And I hope you've found time to look through it because I think it is a superb summary of putting all the huge amount of work that's going on into one place. It is quite technical and it's not easy to read. But it's worth just picking out the highlights and just recognising it for its summary of the work that's being done. I want to say a huge thank you to officers that have been doing all of this work and particularly Rachel. It must have been an enormous job for you, but I think you've done an absolutely fabulous, fabulous job. So I don't know if you'd like to comment, Rachel, for us?
First of all, thank you, Chair. Thank you. Oh, yeah, it's extremely technical, as Chair's just said. But yeah, basically, we were obviously relieved and also extremely pleased to retain the A grade. Because as everyone knows, it's one thing trying to get to a grade, but then trying to retain it is often more difficult. And we're really pleased because actually, CDP, they've actually been approaching Leeds because we are seen as one of the leading cities, as it states in the press releases that have gone out. And what's quite nice is that they're actually looking at working with us on different aspects, such as in terms of procurement. We've had sort of different sessions with other cities as well to be able to see what can be done and almost like a nice working group. And yeah, it's just really a case now of not stopping, keeping going. We've not yet had our feedback from CDP. So we're actually due in coming months to actually have official feedback as to the exact points where we need to improve on. And then it'll be a case of continuing, rather than starting again, continuing on and improving further from, from obviously what we've done. So we're hoping for three years in a row, by the time we do it next year.
Fabulous. Thank you very much. Absolutely super. So anybody got any questions or comments on that item? So we'll start with councillor Rafiq.
Oh, it's working now. Okay. Chair, without repeating, you know, what you and Rachel have said, I think it's a testament to the hard work of, you know, not just Polly's team and Rachel, obviously, leads on this work, but also everybody within the council. Because I think everything that we do with regards to climate action, it actually involves, it impacts everybody within the council and our partners as well. And right, which said, the work. Right, yeah. It must have been me.
Let's take a technical pause. Would you like to try again, councillor Rafiq? Thank you.
Coming up. Is that better? Yeah. Start again. Okay. No, I think it's, you know, what we heard last week for the second year running was about 26 councils in the country. I think we're one of only few core cities to get this second year in a row. You know, like Rachel said, the work never stops here. We've got a long way to go to get to net zero. Early in the year, a report by Forbes stated that Leeds were the first, not the first city, but a council to most likely to, based on our current work and achievement, to reach net zero. So I think that's testament to all the people within Polly, Rachel and others within the climate and energy team. And also colleagues here around this table and Chair, led by yourself, all the work we do, you know, the CAC committee. But everyone within the council, you know, this work involves and impacts on every team within the council and of course, our partners as well. So it's nice to be recognised, but you know, this is really, in many ways, it was still kind of a beginning of our journey to get to, you know, to get to net zero. But, you know, we'll continue to forge on and make progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Anderson?
Do not take this the wrong way, please. But to start with a total 100% positive, the quality of this report is second to none in terms of the work that's been done by Rachel and in terms of pulling all this information out that we're all doing. You know, however, can you clarify, do we pay them or do they pay us for the data? That's question number one. Do we pay them to do this assessment or do they pay us to provide data to them? Secondly, I accept what you've said about the feedback. It'll be interesting to see the feedback. Because I think it would be interesting to read this report along with the feedback. Because one of the comments I made was, there were no comments from them in this report. In other words, euphemistically, you've marked your own homework. You know, I know you haven't, but in other words, they've taken it face value, everything that you've said. They may have challenged behind the scenes, but you would hope that would come into the feedback report. And you might find, you might find that some of the areas you thought you were 100% on, they consider you to be, say, 75%. Areas where you thought you were weak, they might actually turn around and say, well, you're actually perfect. There's nothing more you can do. And so what I would say there is, how can we get a hold and compare like with like? And the 24 that have got them, are they, whereabouts are the other ones that have got the 24? Because I would argue that Britain is at the cutting edge of being the best when it comes to addressing climate change. We are streets ahead of a lot of other economies, lots of other places in the world. It would be interesting to know whether the 24, where they are, you know, are any of them Indian cities or Chinese cities? Who are the ones that really do need to make the A grade in order to bring it down, climate change overall, so that we are safe? Because at the moment, Britain only produces, I think it's 0.1% of the overall. So even if we saved 50%, that only means we're only producing 0.05. It's the other countries and it's how we stand relatively. And then the final point is the feedback. It would be good to know where we need to put our investment. Because one of the issues that we've got next year, doesn't matter who's in power, is we've got budget issues. So we're going to have to decide in limited funds what we're going to do. And where we can get money to target hard-to-reach groups. You mentioned the one about not being connected to the gas network. Well, how do we as a council know about these things? If people don't tell you, there doesn't seem to be any publicity telling you how to argue them. So to say, I'm not being critical per se, the report is brilliantly written, but where's the challenge in it?
Thank you, councillor Anderson. I'm conscious that Polly's not with us, Rachel, so don't feel under pressure to answer it.
Hey, to Rachel before the meeting started, you know, not to take it to heart because she was standing in at the last minute. So I'm not expecting necessarily to have every single answer. I just want the, maybe to get feedback in a month or so's time. I'm quite happy to get that. I'm just raising the questions.
Thank you. So I don't know if you want to comment, Rachel, on anything you feel you'd like to comment on now and anything that you would like to feedback at a later date. Thank you.
So in terms of, like you said yourself, councillor, it'll be a case of probably feeding back from colleagues. But I do know that, I mean, what we can do is, once we have the feedback from the CDP team itself, what we can do is then pull together the areas that we obviously do want to concentrate on. We are very fortunate, which has been said in the past, that a lot of the work that we do within our team, you know, we are fortunate in that we get very lucky with government grants that we've put in for, that our team do exceptionally well getting. So there is potential that when it comes back and flags what we are doing, what we do need to improve on, it might be that we're able to address these through that. Obviously, in terms of anything deeper financially, I wouldn't be able to comment on. In terms of the fee itself for CDP, again, I can clarify this. I understand that there is a fee that it tends to be that anybody, any business, any city that's centre in it pays the fee. But in return, that is a case of there is unlimited access to various benefits, workshops, feedback throughout the actual year, sort of almost like working group feedback, access to resources that wouldn't obviously be available to people. And then what we do have to do is, we have to submit it very strictly by a set date. And then once that's gone in, we have a, well, there's no return after that in that respect. So it's done by, obviously, it's the actual project itself who run it. They basically, they take it in. They won't accept any sort of rebursts on that. Completely agree in terms of, as the old phrase says, we don't know what we don't know. So until it comes back, then we can perhaps look at how we can, you know, address it for next year. Yeah. And I'm happy to share with you, it's obviously in the public domain. We're happy to share with you the different cities and countries that have been, you know, obviously like cities per country. Okay.
Thank you. Are you coming in on this point? Very briefly then, please.
I'm just gonna say, I mean, not what already Rachel said, but you know, I think councillor Anderson is right in terms of, well, what our kind of output in terms of world emissions is, but we can only do what we can do in this country. We can't, we don't have any influence on what happens in the US or China or India, some of the biggest emitters of emissions. But I think, you know, we're only responsible to people.
Sorry, I don't know if I cut you off there. Hovering. Okay, thank you very much. So next person I've got is councillor Carlisle.
Thank you, Chair. Quite a lot of it's been
Thank you, Chair. Quite a lot of it's been said, but I, I do want to add thanks for pulling together all of this information, for gathering all of that. What, what was really clear from it is that it has come from all different departments. And that's the one thing that we always try saying here, that this goes across every department and should be ingrained in every department, the need to, to focus on climate change. And that does come across from the report, which I think is one of the things that, that's most pleasing in a way. And I, I was going to have the question of the feedback and improvements. Many of us as the school governors and as soon as Ofsted have been in, the one thing you focus most on is the feedback that comes back that says where you can do better. And I think it'd be really useful for that to come here and us to have a really good discussion about it. And so that was my main question. One thing I was going to point out, because I've had a look at some of the other list, what was good is that our neighbouring Wakefield joined the A list for the first time this year. So they're obviously doing work. And I noticed that Birmingham joined the A list as, as the largest local authority in the country. So that shows really how big this is going when, when, when areas such as that are on. I think others that I noticed were York, for instance, was on there. But the, the global list does have a large number. However, I, I did note that quite a lot of it was from the West, you could call it, you know. We had Paris, Oslo, New York and various. I think there were some others outside of that. But it'd be interesting to see how the spread is. And it'd be interesting in a way to understand whether that's because of the spread of this project as a whole, as well as the spread, you know, it may just be something that is more relevant and noticed among the Western world as this project and this team. But it'd be good to see, certainly the other reports from other cities may be alongside comparators. That'd be nice to see as well. So that's really useful. But thank you. There was a lot of information here and it was really useful to see in that summary. So I'm glad we've made it public and put it out here.
Thank you. Any more comments or questions? Yeah. Do you want to come in councillor?
Thank you. Yeah, I just first of all, wanted to try and understand what the tangible benefits were of achieving this A grade. What does that do for us? I don't know. Is our life insurance any cheaper if we live in a city that's got an A grade? So it's kind of understanding what the physical benefits of it are. I am interested in the cost of the scheme. And are they paying us or are we paying them? Because there's a lot of data that we're handing over that as far as I can understand, they use and disseminate, you know, worldwide all this information. So are they paying us to, to contribute towards that? And I guess, I know we talked about, there's a lot of technical detail in the report and I, I started to try and delve into it. And you're right, there, there's, it's, there's so much there, it's difficult to get your head around. But in, it's obviously, it's a report that we filled in. It's a Leeds City Council document, really, answering questions that, that they've given us. But there was, there was one example that I looked at and it was about climate related hazards. And the first one was river flooding, which we know is a real hazard to the people in Leeds. And then one of the questions it asks, who are the vulnerable population groups that are most exposed? And when I read through it, the first one I looked at and it said, well, the first group are women's and girls. So that's like 50% of the population. Then children's and youths, which I thought, well, okay, that gets us to about, I don't know, 65, 70% of the population. Elderly gets us to 80%. Marginalised minority community groups, vulnerable health groups. So I'm thinking, if you put all them in, that's about probably 85% of the population. Then it said indigenous people. I'm assuming that's, I'm, I'm one of those. So basically it was everybody. And I just thought that was a very complicated answer to where you could have just simply typed in everyone. And that, that I kind of noticed, sort of run through the stream of some of the answers that were going in there. So it seemed like a fairly cumbersome document, to be honest with you. But yeah, I know, it's taken somebody a lot of time to fill that in. And I'm just, it's, it's a shame we haven't got somebody here that could go through it in more detail with us to see the inputs we put, the finance that we input and what the benefits come out the other side. Is it, you know, we've got the A, could we, I don't know how much the scheme is, could we just pat ourselves on the back and shut it down? Is it driving our climate agenda now? Is it pushing it or is it pulling it? Or is it just simply measuring what we were going to do anyway? And it will contribute absolutely nothing to our climate agenda? Thank you.
Thank you. Do you feel you can comment on any of those points, Rachel? Don't feel under pressure to do so.
Thank you. I must admit, some of them, some of them I will have to take back. I wouldn't possibly be able to. In terms of, I do understand in terms of the questions, just simply because it's actually, it's a, it's a pre-done application. So some of the terminology that's used in the answers, we, we don't have any say in terms of the template or anything. So we do have to sort of really look into how we would actually document data and information and obviously move it around the card instead of tabs effectively that we are given. And in terms of the, in terms of actually the, almost like the point of CDP, there is actually been some data and research done and it is that A-list cities do, it has been sort of shown in data that we actually take four times as many climate mitigation and adaptation measures as non-A-list cities. And obviously with being worldwide, it's also shown that there's actually an increase in taking leadership and ownership and businesses that CDP actually work with worldwide actually feel more inclined to, to work with those cities that have that grading. So it's almost like taking them more seriously. So I am aware of, of that factor in terms of like, say, the more technical details, as councillor Anderson also mentioned. And I'll be able to obviously speak to other colleagues and send all that information around to the committee as well.
Thank you, Rachel. Anybody else? Councillor Bowden?
Yeah, it's just to say, actually, receiving the A, A, A rank and retaining it is, is, it's really great. But I think on the sort of, on the outlook that when, when we have these meetings and, and the other discussion, the fact that we have an ambition that seems actually larger than this A rating, I think that, that should be something that we take to heart really well, actually. We, we have a lot of restrictions and I think we all would want to do more. We'd all would love a, you know, a green mass transit system, which, you know, we, we hope is in the pipeline and we'll hope we'll get there even quicker than it's expected to. And I just think the fact that we, that we're clearly striving is a really good, is a really good indication for all of us actually. That we get it, but we still clearly want to do more as a, as a city and a local authority. And just to, just to mention, if, if councillor Anderson, if you go on the, if you Google it on the CDP website, yeah, there is a map of the 121 cities. So it actually shows you exactly the locations of those cities. It's actually pretty, pretty easy to use. So thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Carl, Carl.
That's all right. I take it any, any pronunciation of my name because I'm used to it. And one of the things that I didn't mention before that, that might also be useful is last year after we got it, I spent a bit of time going through the reports that they compile, which is out of all the data all the cities send. And they were really useful because they showed some ideas that cities are doing that we might not be, you know, some, how will we ever specifically go through all the data and see that New York's doing something that, that we might want to. And another point was they highlighted all the difficulties that were found in the 900 and something cities that had submitted previously. That was really useful. So I wonder what, maybe when we look at the feedback of ours, maybe having that wider idea of the report came back. Because I think that's one useful thing of us giving all this data is that they can then use it to add together and come up with countrywide plans on things or worldwide or, or see that highlights across different ways. And hopefully maybe share. I don't know if they, they assist us with sharing information across other like-minded cities, but that'd be something that I think would be really useful when we look at it again.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments? Okay. So we've got some recommendations to take from that then, that we, that we revisit this with the feedback document. We look at where does that leave us in terms of the work that needs to be done and how can we make best of use of that information to, to drive that work moving forward? And then look at ideas from other cities and how that gives us some information that we can usefully use to keep accelerating our progress. So thank you very much. Okay. So that moves us on to item nine. So we have a rolling programme of inviting directors to come and address us with the work that they're doing regarding climate change in their directorate. So I see we've got Martin Harrington coming to join us. We also are joined by Gary Bartlett and Eve Rudehouse, who I will ask to introduce themselves when they sit down. And then I understand Martin has presentation for us. And then we can pick up with some questions. So thank you. Thank you. Are we good to go? Do you want to start with introductions and then hopefully Martin, your presentation?
Yeah, hi, I'm Martin Farrington. I'm the Director of City Development.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name's Eve Rudehouse. I'm Chief Officer for Culture and Economy.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Gary Bartlett, Chief Officer for Highways and Transportation.
Thank you. Thank you for coming along. So presentation next. Is that working?
Always good to have somebody that knows how it works. Thank you. Yes. So good afternoon, everybody. What I'll do is I'll just spend about 20 minutes or so with Gary and Eve, just going through some broad headlines of this area in terms of the work we're doing in the directorate because of the role that we play, some of that then transcends beyond the directorate and sort of corporate actions. But we'll, we'll treat it all as one big catchall. In terms of the first area I just want to cover is an economic development focus and then on to the culture side. Now I am mindful that Eve came to this group on the 16th of October and went through those in detail. So if it's preferable, I'll deal with this by way of a light touch. But you know that the inclusive growth strategy was launched in September 2023. It's based on three broad themes of people, place and productivity, within which there are nine big ideas. We're collaborating with partners across the city to create an innovation ecosystem. And within this redrafting of the, of the strategy, climate change and tackling the impact of time, climate change has been a central theme. Onto the future talent plan and green skills. In here, looking to develop green skills, provide pathways into green jobs, how we can inspire talent about opportunities in the green economy, upskilling and reskilling the existing workforce and making it, making existing and new jobs better. There are over 20,000 new net zero jobs across 470 companies in Leeds. And we're mindful that as we transition, green jobs will be created and existing jobs will require upskilling. So to exemplify that, one of the areas of work that we've done is with Luminate, who run City College as well, as well as other FE establishments. And looking to develop a curriculum pathways that will equip individuals with skills needed for a carbon neutral economy, including regular reviewing provision to make sure it meets local economic needs and expanding provision in skills sought by employers. So that's a, a key area of activity. Terms of making our places more resilient, and this is where you start to get into this aspect of the inclusive growth strategy, linking into a whole series of activities that you'll be aware of that were taking place across the council. There's the flood alleviation scheme. And we'll touch on the natural flood management aspects of that towards the end of this presentation. The district heating scheme that you'll know well, ambitions to deliver net zero homes, which we'll pick up in the planning part. Woodland creation, some of that on our own land, but that also links to the natural flood management elements as well. And then proposals around electric vehicles and green spaces, which I will also touch on in more detail. And then supporting businesses to thrive. So this is where our work is looking at transitioning to net zero, including the Leeds anchors network. In terms of the anchors network, we've done work in terms of reduce their CO2 emissions by over 21,000 tonnes in 2020 to 21. So that's the collection of the, the largest public institutions in the city that are working collaboratively to deliver that outcome. And also developed a progression framework, considering the impact they have on climate change in the environment and the impact of their land, their buildings and their operations on the places and communities they are based in or near. So all of that work coming together has, has, has helped us move forward across those large public sector institutions in terms of the anchors network. And then work we do in terms of future proofing and growing businesses, innovating to drive and deliver a greener future and unlocking the potential as a home for green finance. One example that I'd bring out on that is Zixtel. Zixtel specialises in IT hardware and has moved towards a circular economy business model. It recently received investment through the British Enterprise Fund to expand its recycling and recovery facility based at Thorpe Arch, Wetherby. And its mission is now to close the loop by creating a new source of supply of raw materials for the electronics industry and ensuring that nothing goes to landfill. On the culture side, and it was touched on in one of the early items in terms of sustainable arts in Leeds acronym SAIL, which is a not-for-profit members' network that supports cultural and creative industries across Leeds to realise an ambition for a zero emissions, zero waste sector. This is enabled by Leeds City Council funding. SAIL was formed in 2018 as a response to the rising climate crisis. And SAIL membership now totals more than 300 organisations. As a council, we're currently providing organisational development funding to help strengthen SAIL's governance and levering match funding in with them. And there's also a close working relationship, who was referenced with the work of Leeds 2023. As the council, we've signed up to EuroCities and the LIL Call to Action for Low Carbon and More Inclusive Culture and developing an action plan around several climate sustainable priorities. And this work again is closely aligned with Leeds 2023 and the legacy work stream on sustainable culture. In museums and galleries, the strategy deepening connections, widening impact, which was approved by executive board in March 22, sets out six outcomes. The first being we will be more sustainable and responsible. So on that theme, recent work includes the opening of a new co-curated display revive, repair, reuse. Stories of sustainability at Abbey House Museum. Publication of a book, Museums and the Climate Crisis, contained a case study by Leeds and staff taking part in the UK museum alongside at the Tate Modern. And then the major events framework, again, which was approved by executive board in December 21, which sets out our commitment to ensuring all major events contribute towards the city's ambition to become zero, net zero by 2030. In terms of planning and sustainable development, I mean, members will be aware of the work we're doing there. But firstly, in terms of the Leeds Local Plan Update, we're updating the local plan to ensure that Leeds planning policies are helping to address the climate emergency. It's currently out for the second round of consultation. It closes on the 11th of December. And it's then looking to submit that to government in early 2024. Draft policies which are out to consultation include requiring all buildings to be net zero carbon, that's zero carbon in operation from 2027 with a policy transition until this time. Require all developments to undertake a whole life cycle carbon assessment. Require developments to undertake a green and blue infrastructure assessment to better understand development sites and their assets. Strengthen existing policies with regard to developments in areas of risk of flooding, as well as many more. And then allied to that, a parallel piece of work stream, which is just behind in terms of time scales, is the Leeds Local Plan 2040. So this is in addition to the local plan update, but we're embarking on a wider update of the whole council local plan under the title Leeds Local Plan 2040. So this will include the spatial strategy, so how development is allocated across the whole geography of the city. Housing and how much housing we need, what type of housing and where. Economic development, so in terms of future employment land, how much we need and where would it be located? The role of centres, making them flexible and attractive, but particularly in terms of having local centres that can meet local need in a sustainable way. Minerals and waste, again, how much do we need and what type and where? And that links to the circular economy. And then transport and connectivity, which we'll be picking up in a minute. The decisions on where development takes place and how much of it and in what form will clearly have profound impact on the achievement of the council's ambitions. So it is a very key piece of work. There's been one round of consultation in spring 23 and the next round is in summer 24 and will include detailed policies and development sites for further consideration. In terms of asset management and regeneration, one area to highlight on the theme of green space is bringing forward air park. So we've completed the greater green aspect of our direct delivery of the project, which included the Meadow Lane Highway, which was the rationalisation of that space to bring forward a new piece of green space as the first part of the park delivered. And also the David Olowale Footbridge, which is a key piece of infrastructure in terms of promoting walking and cycling in the city centre and that connectivity from the north side of the river to the south side and linking into the to the South Bank more widely. It includes the Sustainable Development Location on a brownfield site, bearing in mind that the former Tately Brewery is 22 acres of brownfield land. So a large part of it coming forward as a new city centre park is a key opportunity. As we say there, it's the largest new city centre green space in the UK. And just over three and a quarter hectares with the surrounding development that has to bring him forward. Phase one of the vastin proposals in terms of the park will open early next year. So that will build on what we opened at Meadow Lane. And then we will take a 250-year lease for the management and maintenance of the park, which will be done by the council in house. And this is all then part of a broader piece of work in terms of our spaces strategy, which is where we took a step back as a council and a directorate to look at the development of green spaces in our in the city centre in particular and what the opportunities were and how we would look to deliver them over a period of time. One of those was the air park, which I've just talked about. Another is Playhouse Gardens and you can see a graphic of that there, which has now been completed. It's been in place for about three years. Meadow Lane, I've mentioned the Corn Exchange is completed. MEPC has come forward with their proposals privately. Cuckridge Street, again, completed. Sovereign Square completed and then that will just be have some further work done on it when the hotel completes, probably at the end of next year. The David Olowale Bridge I mentioned and then City Square as a future project going forward. So there's a lot of activity taking place there in terms of greening the city centre. In terms of council housing growth, we have a programme of about 1900 new build and acquisitions that we're moving forward with in total. They have high levels of energy efficiency, EPC ratings of A or B depending on the particular design. Particular measures include electoral vehicle charging points to new homes. We don't put gas boilers in new builds. We put either air source heat pumps or ground source heat pumps. PV panels are also part of the design options that we consider. And around that, we've just completed 300 new build council homes in early November 23 and that includes Throistlewreck Middleton Extra Care Scheme, which has a mini district heating scheme that will support 176 homes when complete. Another key scheme that we're moving forward with is the Leeds Sustainable Travel Gateway. So this is being done in conjunction with the Combined Authority and Network Rail. It helps to address the capacity at Leeds Station. It creates a pedestrianised priority of space rather than a space that's prioritised for the car. New 500 space cycle hub accommodating both electric and accessible bikes. So it'll prove it provide an important sustainable interchange between train and other sustainable forms of transport. As part of the wider schemes, segregated two-way cycle lanes on Neville Street, Dark Neville Street and Bishop Gate Street connecting routes in City Square and the South Bank and the wider network of cycle lanes that Gary's team have brought forward in the city. And then environmental provenance on Dark Street and Neville Street to promote active travel and also lifting the quality of that environment, which has been one of the worst locations in terms of air quality in the city. Then in terms of estates optimisation, just a couple of points. And we're working to ensure that high levels of utilisation across our state and surplus space and we're focusing on retaining our best quality, most efficient and flexibility, flexible buildings and accessible locations. Just as one area of example of the kind of work and something that works during closely with the decarbonisation team that Polly runs. If you look at our leisure centre active Leeds estate, we've installed 22 air source heat pumps. There are 3,154 solar panels in the in the Sports Centre Estate. That's generated carbon savings of 1,488 tonnes per annum. We're progressing an LED lighting rollout as well. So there's a whole series of those kind of opportunities that we're working with Polly's team very closely. So look at highways and transportation now and ask Gary to pick up from here. Gary?
Yeah. Okay, I just quickly whizzed through our slides to give you more chance to ask questions, but four areas I want to cover. Just look at our governance arrangements for this agenda, look at our transport strategy, investment programmes and innovation and successes to date. I keep Martin on his toes. We felt it was really important to make sure there was ownership of this agenda, not just at senior management level within highways and transportation, but to make sure that it was embedded throughout. And so we've put in place some governance arrangements so that colleagues can participate. And particularly, we looked for the younger members of the service to volunteer who have a particular interest in this area to come in and join us in this highways and transportation future climate leaders team, bit of a mouthful, but their role is very much to actually push senior managers, middle managers of the service to to push on this agenda and give them the opportunity to come and present to to the wider service too. So early days, yeah, but that's starting to take shape and hopefully embed it across the service, as I say. So that slide is all about the putting the governance in place so that we we push the boundaries on this agenda. I mentioned transport strategy. Again, it's been discussed in this room at Executive Board many times. Clearly, at the heart of it, we have tackling climate change plus delivering inclusive growth and improving health and wellbeing. But we also have six big moves highlighted on that slide that you can see. I'm not going to go through each one of them, but obviously mass transit has been mentioned in discussions already to date. Indeed, transforming the city centre has as well and obviously decarbonising transport. Mention's also been made of enhancing public transport in this meeting to date. And what I would say there is as the highway authority and all the improvements that we are making and all the moves that we are making, it's very much should be in partnership and and with the Combined Authority as the Transport Authority and the private sector in terms of the bus operators and the train operators. And that's been a challenging environment for those colleagues to work in post-COVID. And so public transport hasn't been, my opinion, operating at full bore since COVID, but it's picking up. And really what we need in this agenda is for all three elements, be it train, bus and our agenda to be working together at the maximum to make sure that we're achieving the most of our ambitious strategies, which have been approved at Executive Board back in October 21. And in in the strategy, which as I say, was declared as being perhaps too ambitious in the Executive Board, but that was that was what was said. We have set some very tough targets around obviously encouraging people to walk, cycle, use public transport and to reduce the use of the private car. Because that's what's going to be needed if we are going to meet our climate emergency and net zero targets. And around that, a lot will be to be around behavioural change, where every individual organisation plays their role. It's not just highways and transportation team that can do this. And this graph really just sets out the challenge and it's the orange bit that is the real challenge. Probably the blue and green will be able to, in terms of the pathway to hitting our 2030 targets, our bits are the green and the blue and we subject to funding and appropriate process, we should be okay with that. The big challenge comes in the orange area where I think more significant measures will have to come in and be discussed at Executive Board and probably at national level to make sure that we are going to get anywhere near those targets of 2030. So we've split our strategy up into three action plans. We're coming to the end of the first action plan next year. Sorry, in over the next 12 months and we'll be bringing that further conversation and commentary to the Executive Board around that time. Again, just conscious of the time and many of you have probably heard about this all before in terms of the Leeds Public Transport Investment Programme. A very significant piece of work with external assistance and financial support. This was a 300 million pound programme that's been delivered now. And we're in the process now of starting the before and after surveys to see what impact that programme of work has had. And and to date, we can see changes and improvements in terms of bus numbers, bus patronage numbers on certain corridors. We just need to complete the before and after data over the next 12 months or so. And Sturt and Park and Ride and its benefits are used as a showcase there, but I shall not go into detail of that. One of our important levers is working with our contractors and our consultants too. So there's a lot that we can do, but we want to exert our influence in the field of our contractors and our consultants to make sure they're doing their bit in terms of social value and climate change. And I think again, as been said in this in this meeting, we're on the start of that journey. There's a long way to go. But in terms of the big schemes, the major schemes that we've delivered in recent years, East Leeds Orbital Route and flood alleviation scheme two, which is on the ground now, working very closely with the contractors to make sure we make benefits and improvements where we can. So a good start, some success has been achieved, but a lot more to be attained as well. It's really important that the council meets its gets its own house in order and and sets its tough targets. So we are refreshing the corporate travel plan in the near future. So we will look to individual services to actually meet their targets and think about how their services are running and moving about the city in terms of these agendas. So and there's a lot of potential here. We've just launched, for example, the Leeds City e-bike scheme. You'll have seen that on street and we'll start to increasingly roll that out. And that's available for internal people to use as well as external. Obviously, hybrid working at the moment helps in this agenda, saving journeys to and from the city. And we've had things like car clubs and eco e-cargo bikes and pull metro cards available for staff for for quite a while now. And we monitor as much as we can to make sure we are hitting our targets and encouraging people to drive down on excessive mileage across their teams and making sure that they think about converting their vehicles within their fleet too. And I think the final slide. Do you want to say, I think?
Yeah. So finally, just on terms of our natural flood management scheme, and this is something that we've done in partnership with the Environment Agency, which has worked well in terms of their ability to help us leverage our impact out of catchment. When it was brought forward, it was the largest natural flood management scheme, I think, attempted in the UK at that time. And three critical areas of soil and land management and tree planting as a means of helping the environment to help mitigate the flood impact on the city, very much looking at upper catchment. So all this work goes from the Leeds Boundary all the way up to Malham in the Yorkshire Dales, where the source of the river is. So in terms of delivery to date, you've got 260 leaky dams, 566 hectares of soil aeration, 1,031 metres of fencing along Bex and associated tree planting, 13 kilometres of hedgerow planting in the upper catchment and 464,000 trees planted. That's forecast to go, there's a programme to take that up to 750,000 trees planted. To date, the measure of this is about reducing peak flow and that's measured at 2.4% currently. And the actions that we have in place will enable it to meet the forecast target of reducing peak flow by 5%. So that that's the direction of travel that we're heading in. One of the key aspects then is about the maintenance of that natural flood management because it it needs maintenance probably more than the hard-edged engineering, given given the nature of those works. And so we're working with the Environment Agency to set up a special purpose vehicle that will have the role of helping to generate funding to support that ongoing maintenance of those natural elements that are brought forward as part of the flood management scheme, which is a key action that will be undertaking over the next 12 to 18 months. So I think that covers a wide range of areas, but happy to open up for any questions, Joe.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that. Thank you for sharing all that work. It's hugely important work. So thank you for taking time to put the presentation together. You did go six minutes over your 20 minutes, but particularly as it was such important work and as we as a committee were the ones who asked for directors to come with information about the corporate travel plan. I didn't really feel that I could stop you. So thank you so much for that. Can I see indications of people who would like to ask a question? We'll start with councillor Foster.
Thank you. Yeah, three fairly quick questions and it relates to city development really. The first one is, do we have any long-term plans regards connectivity between Leeds City Bus Station and the rail station? The second one relates to all the development work that's going on at the rail station in the city centre. Are there plans there to improve connectivity to buses there? Are buses going to be able to get closer to the station? And then thirdly, it relates to the White Rose Station that's currently being built now. And what are the plans regards connectivity between the new White Rose Rail Station and the White Rose Bus Station? Thank you.
Thank you. Is somebody able to pick up on those points?
Okay. In terms of the bus station and rail station, there's been a lot of conversation over the years about should we move the bus station and have it closer to the rail station? The general feeling has been that that's not practical. And so we need to make sure that there are appropriate links working with the the Combined Authority in terms of the bus services that provide and obviously walking and cycling provision as well. So that possible relocation of the bus station has been looked at. I'm sure it will crop up again as part of development of the city as we move forward and whether that is the best use of its space. But I think that's not on the books. I don't know if councillor Carl Lil has any any knowledge with his combined authority hat on on that. In terms of rail station connectivity to buses, I think I probably tried to answer that. The whole the whole approach in terms of city centre is to improve the lot for public transport, cycling and walking by by removing through traffic in particular from the city centre. That enables the the buses to move more freely and and obviously by creating better space for pedestrians and cycling, that enables that movement to take place. So so I hope hopefully in the round that answers the question. I know Martin was going to come on the White Rose one.
Uh, yeah, I mean, on the white, on White Rose, the, within the planning consent, there is uh connections that need to be after been put in. For walking from the rail halt to the White Rose Shopping Centre. So that will be the route then that facilitates access to the bus station.
Thank you. Um, next on my list, I have councillor Carlisle.
Not to be, but easily confused with councillor Carlisle. Um, just a series of uh quick questions. If you need me to break at any point, then uh, because you've had enough, then tell me. Um, do we, I've, I've mentioned this to a few picked on email. Um, I'm, I'm not, forgive me if it has been clarified, but I haven't seen that. Do we have a position on this campaign called Planning, Planning for the Planet? Um, so that was that one and um and somewhat linked to that. I know there have been moves, first and there have been conversations with, I think, Feed Leeds and others. About wanting to um put an obligation on making sure there's space for edible growing um within. Uh, planning applications that fit a certain criteria. And again, I just wondered if that's progressing. Um, I didn't say, thank you, by the way. Thank you for all, all the work you're doing. It's good. And and I just, I've mentioned, oh, we've talked about this previously at, at SEAC. And I'm particularly interested in just the absolute fundamental importance of communication around. Uh, climate action, because I think as, I think there are probably hundreds of PhDs about this. There's a, there's a huge challenge around people uh across society kind of imagining um a proper transition movement. Um, towards a sustainable future. And so I think it's something just really important about making sure that as well as doing good work, we're. Um, communicating or making sure that our partners are communicating um at every opportunity. Uh, I was wondering if uh maybe it's too early, but I was just wondering if you had any sense so far of how the Beryl Bikes work, scheme is working. Um, I tell you what, I've got three more, but I feel, should I keep going or you're making notes, aren't you?
Did, I was going to say, do you want to just answer those first? That's probably easier rather than just getting a bit lost. I'll, I'll come back, straight back to you councillor Carlisle.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of the um. Uh, position planning for the planet, I, I, I'm not in position to answer that councillor Carlisle. But I can get an answer for you and I can provide it in writing through, through the chair if that helps. Um, in terms of the Feed Leeds, I think that'll be something that would get picked up in the local plan 2040. So I can certainly check on that with, with colleagues in terms of planning policy as to. How that is being considered within that process for you. And again, I can feed back. I think the communications on climate action I'd take as a sort of a, 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 a comment that we agree on. And it's, it's, I think it's a question of how successful uh each individual element is in, in terms of delivering on, on that element. So on the Beryl Bikes, Gary.
Thanks, Martin. Um, there's a board meeting coming up in the next week or so where I'll get, I'll get a further update. Um, but um. To start with, it's fair to say there were some issues and I'll just leave it at that. Um, when it first started in the first couple of weeks, but things have settled down now. And um the indications from the organisation is that they've been very pleased with the sort of rate of use of the bikes. Um, and um we continue to roll them out particularly and increasingly now on the A660 corridor towards the universities. Where we expect to pick up a lot of business, basically. Um, so um, as I say, a few issues in the first couple of weeks. Settle down now and and initial reactions are very favourable in terms of the number of times the bikes are being used. And we'll see how that progresses over the next few months.
Thank you. Um, do you want to come in with your other three questions councillor Carlisle?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, um, again, it is something that uh I or we have previously brought up at uh SEAC. I suppose. I, I, I'm interested to, to know as a city, if we can really try to um try to pioneer something in car sharing. Because, you know, wha- any big infrastructural system, and I think we, there is, is broad consensus for kind of proper mass transit. Um, anything will, will, it will take a long time. Um, and uh, yeah, kind of buses continues to be a complex field. And so, but I suppose the infrastructure for car sharing is already there in that. The, the roads are there and the cars are there. And I just wondered if we can perhaps try to learn internationally from other places who are doing it. If we can just, as much as anything, it's a, it's a cultural and social shift that needs to create, you know, if you want to create new norms around. Um, car sharing. And I just wonder if that's something, if that's part of the strategy. Um, I also wondered, um, I don't know about you, but ever so often I'll hear some kind of headline about how, I don't know, 85% of journeys in Holland are undertaken. Yeah, in by virtuous means. Um, and I suppose I wondered, do we, are we, are we monitoring, do we have key performance indicators on? Uh, kind of active travel, you know, the number of journeys in the city being undertaken by uh. Yeah, by active travel. And yeah, are we tracking that and are we going in the right direction? And finally, is there, is there a strategy for the kind of like for the green, blue space along, along the air? I'm particularly thinking um kind of Leeds Dock out, out towards um Sturt. Like is, like, like I'm talking to organisations like Canal Connections and they're kind of interested in, in developing or co-creating such a strategy. I just wondered if, and it wouldn't be for us as the council to hold it, it would be us and Canal, River Trust and others. But I just wanted to know, is that already happening behind the scenes, but just not disclosed? Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to come in on those three, please?
Okay, a bit joint effort again, if that's okay. Um, I was reminded um by a bit of correspondence I had the other day. That there is actually car sharing signs, quite old ones, um available around the city. And there's one which I use every day, and I must admit, I haven't noticed for quite a while, on the East Leeds Link Road. So we, we obviously in the past have had a car sharing scheme. Um, I'm not sure how successful it was and and the sign is very faded now, so much so that I've missed it. Um, I'll, I'll go back to the team and and just get their thoughts on it. My, my immediate thoughts is, um, ob- obviously, we, we are really keen to see trains and buses. Um, maximise, um, become as efficient as they can. Obviously, we've introduced park and rides in recent years. And post-COVID, um, they're now starting to pick up again and particularly in the last few months. And we need those to grow. And I, in the, in the presentation that Martin gave, there's mention of the car clubs as well. So there's a whole range of things we're doing. Um, carpooling, um, not so much so. But I'm, I'm more than happy to take it back into the team and just uh perhaps refresh my memory and get an update on, on the current thinking. Um, in terms of KPIs, active travel, absolutely. Um, I mentioned lip tip earlier and there's a whole suite of performance indicators we'll be measuring around that. Um, but also as part of the Transport Strategy Action Plan, um, the likes of Paul Foster and his team will be developed, have developed. And then we'll be reporting back on indicators. And and the initial feedback they're getting is that where we've actually intervened, there are positive signs of improvement. The difficulty is there's lots of areas where we do need to intervene and that's going to cost a lot of money. And that's, that's part of the problem. But at least it's in, in those areas where we have intervened, there are positive signs, which is, is obviously good.
Uh, yeah, on the blue, green infrastructure, uh councillor Carlisle, we, there has been in place for uh in recent years. A working group as part of the Chamber Property Forum that we've contributed to in terms of the river as it runs through the city centre. I think that's, that's probably coming to the end of its life in terms of the activities that have been brought forward. And there was some money in the capital programme to help jointly fund some, some projects in that geography. Um, we're working with the uh, the armouries currently in terms of their estate and how it interfaces with the river. Um, and then as you, you, you'll no doubt be aware, as part of a flood alleviation scheme one. There was infrastructure further downstream that we put in in terms of uh the new pedestrian and cycle bridge that links. The um, the National Highway uh route, a cycle route that's at that location, is it the A65? Is it sixty five, number sixty five, I think, on the Sustrans route?
Thank you. Um, next I've got councillor Anderson.
Right, I've got a number of questions as well. Now, what I'd say at outset is overall, I'd give you an excellent score for your plans. As a whole, however. What about, you've got some great ambitions which will make some wards. Easy to improve upon, but the outer areas in particular, none of your plans are sp- are addressing the specific issues we've got. For example, you want in public transport. Unless some miracle comes along, it doesn't matter whether it's franchising or whatever. We ain't going to get a lot of public transport to the outer areas, no matter which part of the outer areas you're talking about. And trying to get from, say, in my area, it doesn't matter which part of my ward, out to Geisley. How would you do it? You know, it's, you get, you know, you've not thought it through. So on a transport level, how are you going to deal with it? But more importantly, how are you going to do with in respect of the other strategies that you mentioned in terms of planning, et cetera? Because unless we get these things built in, the developments aren't going to be sustainable. Against the new planning criteria we're trying to get approved by the planning inspectors. Forget about anything we've got just now. So that's number one. What about bringing some of these plans down to community committee level? So that we have a community, you know, we're currently talking to the community committees about how things can be delegated to them. How about delegating some resource to the community committees to develop their own strategies? In within your department and we might be able to make an impact. The next one is one that I've been following for a number of years, road materials. I was, I met with uh some people who nearby, who have told me that they can get tar that operates at a lower temperature. Which means it's more efficient and you can, you can use it to do more work in the time. Every time I brought it up in your department, I keep getting told councillor, you don't know what you're talking about. I'm the expert here and we're not even going to bother looking at it. Well, can I suggest that maybe you should look at it? Maybe you do need to bring back a proper report on the effectiveness or otherwise of it. The next one, airport connectivity, you didn't mention anything specifically about how you're going to connect, get people. By public transport to the airport. Yes, you can get there by car, you can get there by taxi. Or are you defining, still defining taxis as public transport, which is what the airport would like to think? So how are we going to do that? I'm not against taxi drivers, by the way, for anybody to interpret it that way, but it's not public transport. It's still cars going on roads. It's still vehicles going on roads that could cause accidents to knock cyclists off. And affect pedestrians, particularly in some of our places in the outer north east, the north of the city, where the pavements aren't very wide. And it is getting very, it's very difficult to, to operate in that. And then what are you going to do about, it's great what you've got, but a lot of the transport problems we've got in the city aren't of Leeds's making. They come from North Yorkshire, they come from Bradford, they come from Wakefield. You know, people who needing to get into the city for good reasons. And what are you doing to help them get in? Particularly people from North Yorkshire, because North Yorkshire don't have the same pricing priorities when it comes to public transport. So there's a greater incentive to drive in. How are you addressing that? And the final thing is the expansion of Beryl's bikes. I've got a potential development coming at the Longwood Police Station, which is outside of the, the, the Ring Road. And the developer wanted to provide Beryl's bikes to show that he had a sustainable development. But your highways planning colleagues weren't interested because they said, well, it's not within the area. Well, it won't become an area until you actually expand the area. So that's an example of where we wanted to do something locally, the developer wanted to do something voluntarily. But your highways planners weren't interested. Thank you.
Thank you. And in the interest of time, there are a lot of questions there. Um, do you think you could kind of unpick things that are, are kind of relevant to the whole of the committee? And perhaps come back to councillor Anderson with, with anything that's a little bit more specific? Thank you.
I mean, on the um airport connectivity and treating that as a strategic asset, Chair. Um, the combined authority has the project for the rail park and ride, which. That they have to move forward on that, but that would be a key piece of infrastructure in terms of public transport that provides connectivity to the airport. And then over and above that, within the planning application approvals for the airport. The section 106 has a requirement that when the airport gets to four and a half million passengers. That with anticipation that it would grow to five million passengers, they have to bring forward. An application for new public transport connectivity proposals. So I, I, I think the, the, the strategy for the airport and how it connects with public transport. Growing beyond four and a half million will be encompassed in what they do in response to that section 106 requirement.
Um, just very conscious of time. Um, I'll, I'll think I'll take um councillor Anderson's rating of excellent for our plans. So thank you for that. Um, road materials, um. Yeah, we, we do get contacted virtually every day, probably several times a day by contractors telling us that they've got this best solution. And best material ever that we should be using. Um, so it is quite a, a constant game and communication that we have. Suffice to say, though, the point is well made and we are encouraging teams to make sure that they do look at um. Uh, specific materials that might help us and we should not be a blocker to such things in appropriate circumstances. So that's something we're looking at. Uh, long distance, North Yorkshire folk coming in. Yeah, that, that's behind some of my comments around making sure that, for example, the train services are appropriate. You know, why, why are people driving in from North Yorkshire when they could get a train? There are reasons why they're doing that and um the train service needs to be improved. The line needs to be improved and needs to be some investment. Um, I'll have to pick up the Beryl Bike issue separately. I'm not close to that detail. I presume it's because we've started off in a specific area so that um the organisation can move the bikes about within that space. Um, and then they will be rolling it out across other parts of the city, but I'll come back to councillor Anderson on that point.
One I'd like to comment on is the community committee is being given responsibility. The community committee has been given responsibility because I personally think that does cover everybody here. Because everybody would probably welcome being involved at a community committee level, developing their own strategies.
So what we've started um in recent times is um a Leeds Street um for all consultation. Where we're going out into specific areas, um and it'll be rolled out, but we're trialling it first. Um, where we're asking, we go out to the areas and we ask them for their, what are their concerns about highways and transportation issues in their patch? And and that we use something called Commonplace and we ask visitors to pin drop the areas of concern. And also what their concerns are, be it speeding vehicles or difficult to cross the road. And what we hope to do is um in some areas, we do have some money uh at the moment, it's limited. Um, but at least then we have a conversation with the local communities. And when funding becomes available, we can then have a prioritised list, which we've all agreed that we can then work on. So um I think the message there is watch this space.
Thank you. So I've got councillor Thompson and councillor Harrington wanting to come in. Um, can you keep your questions as brief as possible and answers as brief as possible as well, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Um, and I, I would welcome that involvement with the community committee. And if you need guinea pigs, you're welcome in the outer northwest. Um, we'd love to, to be involved. Um, very quick question related to that. I remember there being a similar mapping exercise three, four years ago. I'm not sure what happened with what was input into that because I don't remember seeing any feedback um or any results from it. But I know that in our area, there was a lot of input into the commonplace map, map pin drops. Um, and then on a slightly different issue on green jobs. How are we working, not just with the education providers, but also with the combined authority? Um, linking it all up and careers education, um so that young people actually know that's an opportunity that they can work towards. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to pick up on those, please?
Thanks councillor Thompson. So um in relation to the green jobs work. So we work really closely with the combined authority on employment and skills, um as we do on business support. Um, so I, I think the, the Leeds City Council delivers the careers advice locally through our employment and skills service, rather than the combined authority. Um, but we are through the focus on green skills in the city that we develop for the future town plan, looking at that. Um, we had some really useful discussions just last week, actually, on post 16 education with key partners from the city. Um, and I think that we'll be looking again at careers advice generally included in this so that um. We're making sure that young people really understand all the opportunities that are emerging all the time in the economy, particularly on green skills, but also on other areas. What I would say is I think there's probably more we can do together with the CA. And we're looking to fully map with them to make sure that we're not duplicating and maximising the work across the board on their activities. And we're taking that forward.
In terms of the exercise of three, four years ago. My memory is that that was related to the transport strategy, which was ultimately approved by executive board October twenty one. Again, from memory, there was a consultation paper that was attached to that. But again, I'm more than happy just to check that and come back to you.
Thank you. So finally councillor Harrington.
Thank you, Chair. Just a, a couple of quick points really. You mentioned something about Thorpe Park being at Wetherby. Well, it's not the Thorpe Park Trading Estate is on the verge of Wetherby. Thorpe Park's quite a long way away. So I'm not quite sure which, which bit you were talking about there. Transport car sharing Harrogate runner scheme. It may be worthwhile having a chat with them to see how they actually coordinate that. And developments with no gas, I think it's absolutely brilliant that the city council are leading on that when they're doing. Their own council house building, but what are we doing to ensure? That developers will actually comply with that because having had recent. Yeah, we've, we've had recent discussions in the Wetherby area where we have a lot of house building. One of the builders is actually very keen to comply with that and has come forward and brought, brought forward a possibility of a local heating. Scheme within one of the developments, but how are we going to make sure that any developments that are happening now are going to avoid retrofitting? Because they're still installing gas central heating. And the final bit is, and I don't expect you to answer them all today and come back to me. The River Wharf is another river that runs through many areas of Leeds City Council's area. It also has flooding issues and housing developments have been built in those areas, which are the one that Collingham has already flooded. And just wondering what the plans are with the natural flood management resources for that, if there are any. Thank you.
Thank you. So super briefly, can you choose which to come back to councillor Harrington on and which to address today, please?
Yeah, thank you. Sorry. It's my error on Thorpe Park. It's Thorpe Park with no E as opposed to Thorpe Park with an E. So I got caught there, sorry. In terms of the developments with no gas, the developments that we're bringing with no gas boilers are our council build. So we control that because we are letting the contract. If it's a private development, that would be done through a planning condition, if that's what's brought forward. In terms of the policy framework that we're working at the moment, we can only apply the policy framework that's there. But in terms of going forward, in terms of. The transition to twenty twenty seven, that would be the policy framework through which we'd, we'd pick that up. In terms of the Wharf, our work on the Wharf in the recent times, as you'll know, has been the flood mitigation scheme at Otley. We accept that there is further work to do. We have no natural flood management schemes on Otley at this moment in time. On the Wharf at, at scale and it's something that really we need to look at on a catchment wide basis in terms of the appropriateness. Given the, the, the upper catchment of the Wharf and where the source is.
Thank you. And councillor Carlisle was going to extremely briefly come in with a point.
I can do, yeah. Around car sharing, we've got two schemes actually. There's a, a West Yorkshire wide one, which is lift share, which is for you sharing the journey that you take with somebody. We did sign up to a thing called Car Share with a K, which is for you letting other people use your car. Unfortunately, that company went bust, so we now have to find an alternative. So that's where that has gone. One of the other points I was just going to add was, you made the point of like, so around buses going between locations. One of the real difficulties we've found, as we've found and we're expecting the cancellation of the number nine route. In my area that goes as a full loop, they are the services that private operators have always lost first. Unfortunately, they go through. Round the city in various areas, hitting every bit of traffic as they go. So they're incredibly difficult services. But the ones the city council are now focused on, but unfortunately they're the ones that seem to go first. I, I do also want to just add, I think that, that point around taxis is a bit different one because I think. In a way, for the city where people don't need a car. There will be the odd journey you need to take by car and it is much better for you to nip to the supermarket once a week in a taxi. Than it is for you to own a car and then use it all the time. So I think taxis are part of the, the balance there. Especially because most obviously are extra licensed compared to private drivers, so you would hope they were safer. We can regulate them and most have upgraded to greener vehicles as well, obviously because of the, the impending clean air zone. So I think they do have a place in that because there will be a time when there is no. Possibility of having a bus with multiple people on to go from one village to another in outer Leeds, unfortunately. So yeah, it depends how you go.
Thank you. I'm, I'm going to bring this item to a close. I did allow you in councillor Carlisle because we always benefit from your expertise on, 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 on these matters. Can I thank officers for attending for all the work that you're doing and for taking the time to put, put a presentation together? And thank members for all their questions. Really interesting item. Thank you very much. So we're now going to move on to item ten, which is the Leeds food strategy. Have we got Andrew and Sonia with us? Hi, thank you very much for attending. I understand you've got a presentation for us. I am going to be brutal and stop you at twenty minutes because I'm conscious that we've got another substantial item to come after you. So if you'd like to introduce yourselves first, then you can show the presentation. And if I haven't said thank you, thank you for taking the time to come and talk to us this afternoon.
Afternoon, everybody. Andrew White, senior project managing climate energy and green spaces. I'm also, like Rachel earlier, I'm standing in for Polly Cook today. I will do my very best to follow up with Polly on any other questions that you would. Expect any representative from climate energy and green spaces to answer. I'm going to turn off and introduce Sonia Woodcock.
Hi, I'm Sonia Woodcock. I'm the coordinator of Foodwise Leeds, so I lead the food partnership for the city.
Thank you for attending and your twenty minutes starts now. Can I just ask before you start, Andrew? Will people get copies of the presentation?
I'm scared to press the microphone button now. Okay, so I've prepared today quite, quite a brief report. And far fewer slides than Martin and colleagues presented, so I'll try and stick to time as well. It's going to probably be me, me answering questions and presenting for most of the time. Really pleased that Sonia from Zest and Foodwise Leeds has agreed to come today. Indicates that the partnership we've got across the city for the, for the food strategy. Very brief presentation from me and really encouraging questions, answers, interest. There's an awful lot in the Leeds food strategy. We won't be able to cover absolutely every item. I can answer written questions as well if we're, if we're on short of time. So this is the, the overview for today. The photos on the right or the diagrams on the right are all taken from Leeds food strategy. So over time, the next update, I'll try and choose some, some, some different photos and icons as well. We'll try and keep this linked to how the strategy develops, how we deliver things, how we try. New areas and particularly in terms of, in terms of what we're trying to do, how we learn from that and the, and the strategy updates. So here's the overview really, so got some background. I'll give you some timescales in terms of what we've tried in Leeds over the last several years. How the three missions fit in with what the council's already trying to do. We've spoken quite a lot already around carbon from, from Rachel earlier, earlier today, but also you've heard about land use. We've been also talking about financial inclusion, we're talking about budget challenges. No surprise, they all impact on the food strategy as well. I'll talk about the three missions. We'll talk about the partnership that we've got, very, got very sort of visual outline in the report, but provided that in the, in the presentation as well. Then we'll talk about next steps, what we're going to try and do as the partnership matures, as the strategy develops. At the moment, this is a strategy intended to run to twenty thirty, so aligns with the climate emergency timescales. So fifteen years ago, we had a food strategy for Leeds led by public health. A few years after that food strategy ended, Feed Leeds had a deputation to Leeds City Council recommending a new food strategy for the city. And really what we've got, starting this year, has been the culmination of all of that work. The then director of public health was tasked with building the partnership. The partnership was developed and matured between twenty seventeen and twenty twenty two. The executive board approved plans to consult on the draft Leeds food strategy. Around this time last year, autumn, autumn last year, the consultation ran for a couple of months between October and December. We had remarkable agreement actually from the. Seven hundred or so people that took part in the consultation in the events with the areas that we had proposed. The weakest area that we'd recommend as an objective, and there's fifteen objectives, was eighty three percent agreement. So one of the things I think we need to learn is we've, we've built an awful lot of expectation that we're going to deliver on these objectives. And maybe one of the things we've got is to deliver on these before we move on to new objectives. So we're very, very keen to generate enthusiasm and appetite for new areas, but we also want to deliver on these areas. So March twenty twenty three, executive board approved the Leeds food strategy with the revisions and with the, following, following the consultation. And then earlier in the year, July, we launched the food strategy. I provided a link to the food strategy in both the report and in the, and in the presentation. And that's an, an icon there on the right hand side of the sort of sticky landing page we've got for Leeds food strategy. We've got an email identity, we've got communication that goes out on behalf of Leeds food strategy, like Leeds, for example, like Leeds climate, climate emergency. The aim is for it to run to twenty thirty, very much expect it to look rather different by twenty thirty as we refine, develop. Get smarter in terms of our measures and build up from. Testing things, trying things, having examples to having firmer measures that might apply across the whole district or apply where they're most needed. So Leeds food strategy is a partnership with Foodwise Leeds, represented by Sonia today and Leeds City Council. There are three main council services that contribute towards the council's part of that relationships. That's public health, sitting in adult, adult social care, financial inclusion, sitting in customer access and welfare and climate energy and green spaces in communities, housing. And environment. So it's three missions, each aligning very closely with the three council pillars that I'm sure everybody here today is very well aware. So mission one is around health and wellbeing. Mission two is around affordable food, part of a diverse, inclusive and vibrant food economy, fits very strongly with financial inclusion as well. And mission three fits, fits very strongly with the net zero and the broader climate action. So I'm going to read this out in more detail. I suspect more of the questions later on will be around the mission three. So our mission is to ensure the way Leeds produces, consumes and disposes of food is fit for the future and supports our climate action plan. So mission one, and I'm just going to go through the, the five objectives that we've got there. So objective one, ensuring people of all ages know how to access, prepare and eat food that supports health and wellbeing. Objective two, to champion community food initiatives that support healthier eating. Objective three, to change our city environment to help make healthier food more appealing, so available and appealing. Four, offer targeted support to those of us who are most at risk. Five, develop a skilled local workforce who advocate for healthier eating. And you can see even from the objectives, that's a mix then of initiatives that the council can lead on. Measures that the council is already looking at in terms of, for example, JSNA outcomes, in terms of looking at super output areas. Areas of deprivation, areas where you've got pockets of ill health, pockets of poor diet. And also particularly the areas that the council can't do on its own in terms of community organisations. But also they're growing then in terms of local, local response. And, and pushing for maybe something different in different parts of the city. So mission two, food security and economy. And again, this is led from the financial inclusion part of customer access and welfare. I'll go through the objectives again. So to tackle factors limiting people's ability to afford the food they need. Objective two, to help those in need of support to access affordable and inclusive food initiatives. Three, continue to build a strong partnership approach across all sectors and with the people of Leeds. Four, to support and unlock opportunities for local food businesses and workers. Five, promote Leeds as a vibrant food city, celebrating our independent food, drink, events and culture. Our mission three, and I suspect we might need to come back to this and maybe leave the, the slides on the screen if there's more questions. So objective one is around tackling waste by reducing, redistributing and utilising surplus food. Objective two, raise awareness of how we can eat nutritious foods that are good for the planet. Three, encourage and embrace new ways of producing, selling and serving food within local communities. Four, support local farmers to transition to resilient and profitable agriculture, which improves the environment. And five, to champion environmentally sustainable and resilient food buying. And that, that third theme again is a partnership between the council and Foodwise. And, and that theme is led within the council by climate energy and green spaces. And currently politically, that's the reporting mechanism. That's why we're, we're talking about this primarily or initially here. And we may then provide a similar update then to other, to other parts of the, the council in terms of the community structure. Okay, so next steps included in the report, I've provided at the back of the report. The full forty two action points supporting the three missions. This is year one. It doesn't mean we have even a very, very clear measure for exactly what the baseline is and how we're going to deliver it. But these are the areas that we said we thought, we thought we would, would work on. These are also the areas where we've developed together with Foodwise. Research areas, areas of need that we want to engage with, with the universities that we've got, not just in Leeds, but also in the region. So provided all of the action points there in the report. And in terms of our governance, steering group is chaired by councillor Marshall Cottong. And then we have quarterly meetings, Foodwise Leeds, had the most recent one about ten days ago. And then we have Leeds, Leeds food strategy steering group, that's twice annually. And the internal group, the council's internal group, you can imagine the discussion we've got across the council. That's then chaired by one of the three chief officers for those three areas for the council and they meet three times a year. And I think particularly given, given what you've heard from city development today, you can imagine we've got a lot of discussion about land use, about planning. About integration or alignment of this strategy with other areas that council's delivering. We've also got work to do to make sure that we've got. I think fitting in from the early discussion around having a local input in terms of the strategy to make sure then we're engaging with different parts of the city. To, to develop either develop capacity or to, or to develop learning in terms of some of the key areas that we're, that we're delivering there. The next time we plan to report on sort of aggregate overall progress would be to Leeds City Council Executive Board after the end of the financial year. So after thirty first of March, so spring twenty twenty four, we will provide a full formal report on the strategy. On the missions, on the partnership and particularly on the, on what's been, what's been delivered, what recognition we've got. But particularly also about where we think the, the challenges are in delivering what we've already set out. How far away they are? Are they just, just within reach? Or are they much further away? To give you an idea in terms of some of the areas that you might have questions about. We've got some aggregate levels of carbon measures around food that fit with food waste, that fit with what Rachel was talking about in terms of carbon disclosure. That would also fit in with discussions then about, about waste collections and how that, how that might fit. We've also got discussions about things like carbon calculators to put a carbon measure on food items or menus. And that would be in schools, that could also be in cafes, it could be also in council premises. What we need to do there is to develop those areas of capacity. What we need to do there is to develop those areas of capacity within the council through our approach to procurement or through our approach to developing there to bring people with us. I think that's probably a sort of step-by-step approach rather than a sort of sheet dip where we expect everybody suddenly to take one big one big jump and move together. But we might be surprised exactly how much progress we're able to make there. Overall, in terms of the Leeds food strategy commitments, we're aiming for zero food to come to Leeds. From air freight, we're aiming for zero food to come to Leeds from anywhere that doesn't border with Yorkshire, and that we'll probably use the nineteen seventy-four borders there. So we might include Cleveland, we might include other old, I can possibly suggest some of the younger councils might not know what I'm referring to there. So Westmoreland. So we're defining Yorkshire very broadly as what's one neighbouring authority. But particularly for us to halve the carbon footprint of the food that the council delivers, council serves, but also then that is not eaten, that then is either food waste or goes to the little fellow we've seen on one of the earlier slides in terms of the farm we've got, where some of the leftover food goes there. Okay, I'm going to stop. I'm going to see if I've missed something out. I'm sure I have, Sonia. I'm really sorry. And just see if there's anything else Sonia wants to add in terms of food wise.
I'd just like to say, an area that we're looking at at the moment is around procurement and how we can't just look at it as a city level, we can't just look at it as the council. So we're looking at this at the moment on a regional level with West Yorkshire and then even wider. But working closely with the university right now and other food partnerships across the region because we have to look at the bigger picture. But Leeds will be the, will be leading on it.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation and the information. Really, really important work. Anybody wanting to ask any questions? Get councillor Harrington?
It's a very little question. It says in the report that one of your objectives is that Leeds City Council will lead by example in their own venues. Are we also going to look at leisure sites? So leisure activity sites, swimming pools, sports clubs, et cetera. Because every time I go to the leisure centre in Wetherby, there is a whacking great machine that sells chocolate bars, crisps, all sorts of stuff that isn't particularly healthy. You're encouraging people to go to the gym and go swimming, and then that's what's available to them to buy. I know it might be an income stream, but we probably need to reconsider that and see if we can get some healthier options in all of our leisure centres across the whole city. Thank you.
Do you want to come in on that one, please?
I will actually. Public health has done some some important work around the around the vending machines in leisure centres. But there is more to do, certainly. And I think we'd like to push for healthier options. I do know that they keep them under a certain calorie level. But it is an income stream, but it's somewhere that we we keep pushing. But there is complications as well with the vending machines. And then when there is actually a cafe on site, and there can be real contradictions there. So it's about trying to work together across the two different, you know, two different areas of it. So one doesn't undermine the other.
That was that was me. I put mine on Andrew because I didn't know you were going to come in as well, but please go ahead.
Oh, for a minute there, councillor, you made me worry about ice cream vans in the parks. I'm sure there's something we can do step by step. I think our starting point is to do with the the cafe, the food that we are contracted to do where we are the cafe owner. And you're quite right, there are some sites that we, it's our staff making the food with people with council badges on. That also is part of, on a sort of narrow point in terms of what Rachel will have said earlier today. That's also part of our scope three carbon emissions. That's to do with the services we procure. So it's also to do with the contractors that we have. But you have now made me worry about what how far we go and how we do that. And I think I will ask a question of our procurers. So that's the officers, not just the procurement of exactly what is the responsibility or how we look at vending machines and other items. But exactly as Sonia said, our aim is to have a healthy option in every format. So very much like the the good travel choice to give people an option. I think in in travel terms, we maybe want people to drive less. We're not bothered if they walk, cycle, get the bus, get the train. Here, we want people to have a healthy option. We're not bothered if that necessarily is something that's more local, low, low, low carbon and healthy or something that is less sugary and healthy. We want there to be a healthy option on every menu and in every vending machine. How we do that without committing to an order of every vending machine in Leeds is something that I absolutely think is implicit in the food strategy. I think in terms of the measures we'll need to identify food where we serve and then contracts and relationships where we have a broader arrangement. And it might be more something that we influence rather than control, a bit like the discussion around transport buses and the airport and so on.
Thank you. And I think that's a really important point that that you raised there. And not only with regard to the food that is in vending machines, but also the packaging that it comes with. It doesn't send out a very good climate message, does it? So thank you. Okay, councillor Thompson.
Thank you, Chair. I'll try and be quick. One quick question left with me by a colleague who's had to leave about partnerships with Incredible Edibles and how that links in with the food strategy. And then secondly, how we work with schools who are not using council catering. As a parent of two teenagers, I'm very aware of the kind of food that's provided for their school meals when I haven't managed to put a packed lunch together. I wonder if there's any work being done to explore that. Thank you.
In regards to Incredible Edibles, so within the partnership, Feed Leeds is one of the organisations that sits on the steering group. And so Incredible Edible feeds into Feed Leeds, who then come up and we're very much in support of the work that Incredible Edible is doing. And we'd really like to have like the right to grow in the city and more space available for growing.
Sorry, Chair, I was looking at you just to see. Yeah, and I think linked to what you heard earlier from Martin Gerri and Eve, there's clearly a land use planning strategy there. There's definitely work to be done on looking at the land that could be used. So I know there were questions asked either last week or the week before around Hull in terms of the first city to have the right to grow around that. I think it's become a slightly more complicated issue than Hull thought it was in terms of which land probably the incredible edible equivalent of vending machines in terms of who owns the the land and so on. It's absolutely part of that discussion in terms of land use and the and the planning approach. And particularly given the, for example, the discussion around flood prevention, it may well be that food can be grown on areas that previously were floodland in terms of that. So that's something that is ongoing. I've got meetings with different parts of the council who aren't necessarily involved in the day-to-day Leeds food strategy with the highlighted areas of the action plan at the back and saying, I need to talk to you about action, action point twenty-eight. Let's you and I sit down and just work out what what the timescales are and how you involve us in what you're doing. And then how we take those suggestions and timescales out through our Foodwise steering group, as well as then to local to local communities. In terms of the second point, we've actually got some really good engagement and input from the catering side of the council. So it's really, really good. We've got people very, very, very interested in carbon calculators. We are pursuing a sort of freeware carbon calculator, which probably would save the council or the city up to a hundred thousand pounds because the university's developing it. It does mean development beta testing is a bit slower there. But like you, councillor, my sixteen-year-old son, if he finds something he doesn't like on the menu at school, then he goes to Greg's on the way home. And that won't be captured anywhere in any of our measures unless we adopt the vending machine approach to Greg's as well. So it's really important. We've got that engagement with those schools. First of all, where we, again, we are providing directly. But secondly, we've got that discussion also then around the the locations. And I think you mentioned the city colleges earlier. Actually, there's a Greg's in Leeds City College. That's not a very good example. Where we've got maybe more an influencing than a controlling approach. So it might be phase one, phase two. Let's see what let's see what we can do. But again, our approach there, I think, would be to make sure that we've got that discussion around having a healthy option. And a healthy option might be a local option, might also be a vegetarian option, might be a smaller portion. There might be all sorts of routes to applying that. So that's something that we're discussing. But I'm pleased to say we've actually got input from several officers from the catering side, catering Leeds, but also from the procurement side as well. They're very, very keen in updating the next round of contracts to make sure that they are reflecting Leeds food strategy in their market testing as well as then in the in the contracts they've got going forward.
Thank you. Anybody else wanting to come in? Councillor Bowden?
In regards to the objectives, maybe it might be on the wellbeing part of the wellbeing or economy mission, because I remember the consultation when it came to the community committee. And I mentioned it, but it's not mentioned here as well, is I'd like to see something in regards to more on workers in regards to those farms that make sure they've got really good employment practices. If that's workers' rights and making sure that the workers at the farms are actually getting paid a decent wage. So I'd like to see something like that, if I'm honest, in one of the sort of, in regards to like the objections and actions. I've had a scowl, but I couldn't really see. I saw in regards to like, making sure workers have apprenticeships and 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 stuff like that, but nothing popular on wages unless I'm mistaken. Thank you.
We've got section for objective fourteen is all around the support for local farmers to transition to resilient and profitable agriculture which improves the environment. Clearly profitable and living wage are not mutually contradictory. It's part of the broader recognition around sustainable food places that we look at the living wage. I think it's, I think we probably agree in terms of the partnership that our relationship and engagement with farmers hasn't been something that we feel is as well progressed as it is elsewhere. And that's one of the areas where particularly, I think, maybe following today and elsewhere, or further discussion, we'd really like to pursue. So I've got a colleague who's a senior project officer who's been pursuing the National Farmers Union to get a better relationship. If there's something, councillor, that you could suggest, that would be brilliant. But I do know that we've got the sort of correspondence and things we've been trying to pursue there. It may be possible that we could pursue some of that through the university. It might be the university's got other links with farmers locally as well. So we'd be happy to follow that up.
Thank you. Anybody else with questions or comments on that item? Okay, can I just come in with a few of my own then, please? First of all, I wanted to ask about the progress with the sustainable food places. Silver, how's that going? Do you want me to? I'll just ask them one at a time, if that's all right. So if you want to come in on that one, please.
Unfortunately, we weren't successful this time, which is really disappointing because we put an awful lot of work in across the partnership to pull the award together. But we did know going in that we had some challenging areas and around economy and around procurement. And so that will be our focus moving forward. And just, I think, just have a bit more partnership-led work. It's a lot to do, but we need to get some of these conversations happening more and getting more people across in the city involved, like business owners involved and sort of having that shared mission. Which which takes, you know, you know, it takes capacity. So that's what we need support for.
Thank you. But just coming in on that, we have two working groups. We have one that looks at food and we have one that looks at businesses. And maybe if there's support that you want that we could offer through that in terms of bringing elements that you would like moving forward to either of those working groups. And we can look at discussing them there. That might be a possible partnership going on. Okay, so the second one that I wanted to bring up was about community composting. So you've got that down as your action thirty-one. And I know in my ward of Seacraft, we've been very successful with our pilot. But I know that there are other parts of the city where it's struggling. And I just wondered whether there's a piece of, whoa, a piece of work either going on or to be done to do with kind of various arms of the council talking to each other. Because this is here, really clearly, in a strategy supporting community composting initiatives. But on the ground, it doesn't always happen. So I don't know what the answer is to that, but perhaps shouting loud and clear across the city that we have a strategy and it's there and it should be adhered to.
Absolutely. Because obviously we deliver the compost collective from Foodwise. And we have run into some issues lately around a waste transfer licence. And it just, it seems to be stuck at the officer level at the moment. And I think we just need to elevate it because this is a citywide ambition. And the programme that we've set up, of which Seacraft is a part of, you know, we feel is very safe and secure and it's not going to lead to rats and vandalism and because it's a community development approach about getting everybody involved as volunteers and taking a role rather than just providing a service. So we're confident, but we do need support now to get it across the line so that we can continue to develop and support more communities.
Thank you. Can I ask committee members, in general, are we supportive of community composting initiatives? You know, could you take that back that as a committee, we're one hundred percent behind this and, you know, we would support it being rolled out rather than pulled back? Is that okay? All right. Yep, you have agreement for everybody around this table. So thank you. Did I have any more? No, I think that's probably it from me. So, oh, just one thing. Well, let's go to recommendations. So on page one oh seven, we have recommendations that we are to make on this report. So one, to note the contents, which we do. Two, to note the progress, which I think so far has been very impressive. So thank you very much. And you are seeking support from us for communicating, delivering and developing the strategy. Can I have agreement that we're all supportive of developing this work moving forward? So thank you very much for that. And then that kind of fell into my last point really, which was you said you're delivering a formal report to exec board by spring of twenty-four. Again, you're very welcome to come in advance of that to one of our working groups and, you know, we can, we can look at that. Got some more nods around the table on that. So thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for the work you do and thank you for your time. And yeah, would you like to come in?
Just to say, Chair, in terms of recommendation, recommendation three, is it something that you want me to to do in terms of newsletter item on community composting in terms of either a call to action or a call to do something differently? Sonia, I might need to talk to you in terms of the areas where it's when we talk about a rollout and then a rollout of compost, I've got to imagine there that we might have too much in some areas and not enough in others. So something in terms of maybe a more specific some call that we might want to draw attention to. If that's okay, Chair, I'll follow up with you on getting an item for one of the next newsletters.
I think that'd be fabulous. I'd be more than happy. Thank you very much. Super. Okay, thank you. Thank you for attending and thank you for your time. And that takes us on to our last item of the afternoon, which is an update from Rosa and Millie. So thank you. Thank you for waiting and thank you for taking the time to come and talk to us. I think you have a presentation for us, do you? So if you would like to introduce yourselves and the organisation you represent and then go straight into your presentation, that'd be super. Thank you.
Yes, hi everyone. I'm Rosa Foster and I'm co-director of the Orchard and Humber Climate Commission.
Hi everyone, I'm Millie Duncan. I'm a research fellow at the University of Leeds and manage the Leeds Climate Commission.
Okay, so we're just going to run through a bit of the, so the paper that you had ahead of the meeting just sort of set out about the history of what a climate commission is. We haven't been to a CAC for a number of years, I don't think. So we just thought it was important to So we just thought it was important to just reset the scene a bit of what a climate commission is, what an opportunity is for Leeds and Yorkshire and Humber. And really therefore then provide a platform for discussing how we can work together, particularly in the city, but also making use of the regional framework that we've got now. Okay, so a climate commission started in Leeds. We had the first one. We've now got the largest regional climate commission as well. Arguably, it shouldn't necessarily be an accolade that, you know, it would be great if these were everywhere. But it is what it is and we happen to have the first and the largest in our region and city. And ultimately, it's worth remembering, these came from a research initiative of trying something different in response to climate emergency, recognising that public sector, private sector, third sector collaboration was needed to generate holistic climate action. And this was a way of having a go at that. And at Leeds city level, it's been proven, well, it's proving to be very successful. And Millie will outline some of the changes and the new approach that we're exploring and developing. And I'll do the same a little bit ahead of that on the regional side. So yeah, it came from the Place Based Climate Action Network. That's a five-year research programme that's just about to come to an end. And as a result of that programme, there are now, so Leeds was the first ahead of that. And then because of the success of it, the team led by Professor Andy Galson, who can't be here today due to ill health. But led by Andy, there were commissions set up in Edinburgh and Belfast. And then through the Place Based Climate Action Network, further approximately 20 of different kinds of commissions at different scales have been developed around the country, most latterly in Cornwall as well. So literally the breadth of the UK, which is really fantastic to see. And they're all variously doing different things. There's a great network that we can draw on there. The Yorkshire and Humber Climate Commission was launched in 2021. Yeah, in response, I think, to the scale of the floods during 2019, 2020. It takes a bit of time to get those things going. So Yorkshire Leaders Board agreed to support it in the summer of 2020. And then we had some working groups, sort of looking at what the remit of the regional commission could be and so on. So we worked that through and launched in March 2021. So we're about eight, two and a half years into that being. So the way we operate in both commissions really is about mobilising existing capacity, wherever it is in all organisations, as much as possible towards climate action. Because we have no time to wait. There is a need obviously for new resources and new capacity and additional. But in the meantime, let's do more with what we've got. So it's a core principle of ours that we enable constructive debate, much like you do here at CAC, where you explore quite difficult issues. But you do it in an honest and constructive way and develop a collective view. We build and strengthen our evidence base, that any best practice, wherever it is, in the UK or around the world indeed. We try and promote that and adopt it wherever we can. And we build capacities at an individual and a corporate organisational level and that we review that progress. That's the one that we've had, we've probably got the most work on because it's the hardest in terms of setting KPIs and metrics and so on around climate action. But it's one that we really want to focus on in our next phases. Yeah, okay. And it was interesting, some of the discussions earlier with Martin and his team around planning policy. So the Yorkshire Leaders Board in the summer approved some regional planning policy principles. So they are just principles. We know very well, obviously, the frameworks around that and the rigor that every councillor has to go through around local plans. But the idea of the regional planning policy principles was for everybody to be able to aim for a reasonable highest as opposed to running the risk of going for the worst bottom because you're worried that other people are going to let stuff happen, you know. So we raised the bar collectively. So there are eight planning policy principles, which I'm very happy to share with the committee after the meeting. Four of which were approved in full and like, you know, just taken, yes. There's a lot of work behind the scenes, obviously, with the heads of planning and planning offices around the region. But four were approved in full and then four require some further evidence. And that's clearly set out in the document and the case for them is there. Okay, so commissions are tricky beasts. They're coalitions of the willing. So they are, they're mainly volunteers, you know. So on the one hand, we've leading and directing these big organisations. But ultimately, everybody could turn away from it and go, actually, I've got too much going on. So it's a very fine balancing act in terms of leading and managing them and how much we rely on them. You know, we do rely on them. There's a real piece of work to do, but everybody is volunteering. It's a mixture of overlap with day job priorities, of course, and the people you can rely on the most. But there's a lot of altruism as well, which is really great and it's very heartening, I think. Yeah, so step on there. So yeah, just in terms of the timeline. So this sort of sets out, this slide sets out the journey we've been on to date in terms of the staggered progress around climate commissions. And then PCAM sadly is folding, but there's a lot of appetite within all of those commissions to maintain that national network of information sharing. So we're just exploring that together about how that carries forward. It'd be immensely useful for everybody because climate action's hard, isn't it? It's exhausting, morally challenging. So yeah, having a place where you can go and work through some of that stuff together and learn is incredibly valuable. So hopefully that will carry on. And we're very pleased to be able to share that. We've got in March this year, we secured support from Yorkshire Leaders Board, political support for the regional commission to carry on. So the Yorkshire and Humber Climate Commission will continue until 2030, which means we can really get planning around that with a little bit of seed funding from them and also significantly from the University of Leeds. So I think it's really important to be very proud of that university's leadership on its climate plan and what it's doing in terms of reaching out into the city, supporting the Leeds Climate Commission. But also actually recognising its role as an ANCA institution in the region and how that will help the city of Leeds too. So some really impressive leadership with some serious money up to 2030. So the staff team is about half funded, just to give a scale, half funded by the University of Leeds at the moment. Okay, so there are two commissions. How do they work together? Millie and I have been working this through over the last few months. And really what we think is the regional commission is very much about building that regional evidence base and regional picture to inform. It's an easy phrase to say, it's quite hard to do, but systems level thinking and decision making. Trying to find those activities that will help or things, the conditions we need to create to enable sort of tipping points to be reached en masse across the region. What conversations do we need to convene and facilitate around that? It's come up through both the presentations you had just before ours around the importance of public affairs and communications. Comes up in every conversation about climate. You guys will know that. You'll have it all the time. So we're creating a new public affairs group in the regional commission to do exactly that. So both in individual messaging, as best we can, like, yeah, human centric, person centric sort of messaging. But then also a clear policy advocacy around the region and working with elected members of all kinds around the region, all kinds of scales. Very much clear and continued need around communities and engagement focus at the regional scale. And also I mentioned the Regional Policy Forum and those planning policy principles that we've developed and continuing the national policy collaboration. So real scope there for activities and challenges within the city and through the city commission to, in a way to be escalated. I mean, it's not a hierarchical thing, but to be progressed or shared on and like, this is a regional thing. This goes outside our city council boundary or the commission boundary and we need help with facilitating this. If we're experiencing maybe other places are, so what can we do about that and sharing the best practice? And then hopefully the flow back from the regional commission is, yeah, being able to just platform on some of the work that's done regionally once and being able to accelerate action in the city and those sort of collaboration opportunities. Okay, I won't go through everything on this slide, but this is just some highlights over the last year. Been really busy in the regional commission. So we've had 22 expert-led sessions across the four pillars of climate action. So for the regional climate commission, the four pillars of action are net zero, obviously. Also adaptation and resilience on an equal footing, our focus on a fair and just transition in the future economy. And although maybe not so future, right, needs to be now, and also very much on restoring nature. So those are our four priority aims. We've had 22 sessions exploring a range of different aspects of those four aims. We heard from 82 speakers from 71 different organisations. And honestly, like the number to say like 22 sessions in 11 months, 1,000 hours of expert advice. So we've got a real, we've really been able to pull together a lot of very valuable resource for anybody in climate action in the region to use. So we're just working out through some public consultation on commonplace. That's quite an intensive programme, as you can imagine. But hopefully all of those insight papers will be available online and we'll be able to promote them between now and the summer next year. Mentioned the planning principles. One of the things Rachel will know about, sat next to councillor Dyers, the local authorities are participating in a climate adaptation programme across the region. And that has been absolutely fascinating to work through, bringing together not only the climate officers but and corporate leads within the local authorities and taking it upper level, helping them build a network of climate leads as well as being very rewarding to see the connections and knowledge sharing going on. But also bringing together the risk managers and emergency planners between authorities on the specific issue of how we adapt and become resilient to climate risk. There's others there, but I'll stop in the interest of time. I did talk about this as we were going through it before. So again, you can see these, you know, we can share these slides. I'm very happy to explore any of this with you further. But in the interest of time, we'll move on. I'll hand over to Millie.
Thanks, Rosa. Yes, so to jump back into the Leeds Commission. So for a bit of extra context there on my role with that, I also support aspects of the Yorkshire Commission. But as our team grew, we had a bit more capacity to focus back in on Leeds. So we've got some highlights of what we've been up to this year and it's been a bit more around strategic planning. So learning over the past five years what we've done really well, what hasn't worked so well. And actually then what the commission can start to do really well. So we've joined in, we've kind of spoken to a lot of city partners to capture all of their views, including all of the previous commissioners participated in a lot of city workshops to kind of see the ideas that were emerging and where we can support. And I'll delve into the kind of core streams. That's been my other job this year of supporting some different initiatives across the city. So there's a list there, some of which I imagine you'll be familiar with. But also some that we see building upon consumption emissions being a really big one. As it's shared, how do we start building an ownership from the public, private, third sector to start getting some projects moving? So this is one of the core functions that we've been exploring. That's quite an exciting one, certainly with the university resources behind that, of being able to advise and evaluate the progress of the city, but by using our commissioners. So to develop an independent dashboard that really speaks to that. So using all of the carbon emissions data that the university capture, looking across all of the policies and the frameworks, the council's outputs, how the private sector is doing to capture all of that and feeding it into this dashboard to track how we're getting on, what we're doing, what the policy looks like, highlight where there's really successful projects are, what all of our partners and commissioners have been doing. To use all of that, say fantastic, we're doing a really good job in these areas, but also what are we really struggling to do? So we can set our own internal KPIs, report against them, but then say, right, the commission can then focus on these really high impact areas. We can channel them into an annual report that captures all of that and whether the outputs are in the capacity of really key position papers or statements to relevant parties, but actually a pipeline of really specific projects. So we can see the progress we need to make on the projects that we need to support. Yeah, we've just added the kind of outputs, outcomes rather, and impacts of really that shared ownership being such a huge piece of this and the accountability. So if squashed into this slide, I hope everyone can read it, but if not, of course, we'll share them after. But the other two core functions that the commission is looking to support, the top one being around convening, the convening power. You know, we have the capacity to network across the city and pull together all of our stakeholders through those networks to say, what projects have you got going on where you need support? What can you see quite formalised? And, you know, we can support you with looking for funding. We can bring you together to kind of share resources and mobilise those aspects. And as well as a bit of a forum of just connecting everybody working in sustainability or climate across the city to say, you know, if you need a space, this is the space that we can provide and facilitate those ideas and move it forward. And then that final piece really that I think sets it apart around using its independence to create more secure collaboration than new climate action. So in those high impact areas to say, this is where we need to be bold. This is what we can support you leading on. And this is where we can hold it. It's not the responsibility of any individual organisation. So this is where it can be. And actually, we can start putting that into a series of direct projects, which is something we've not been able to do in the past, kind of being the voice of making climate more heard. We've progressed a lot since then. So we can start seeing those specific projects coming through. And this will be the next phase of work. Really, we'll be able to publish early next year how we see the next phase of the commission appointing new commissioners and getting people really excited about the next sets of work there.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so we really wanted to just, I mean, clearly we'll answer any questions you've got. But we did kind of want this to be a little bit more of a discussion or like for us to listen to you in terms of what your priorities are. It was very, it was genuinely fascinating listening to the two items previously and obviously understanding the scale of the work, but then the questions that you were asking them and, you know, the council officers. So yeah, just to explore that a bit and what your view is from all of those meetings that you have looking at this, where you think either the city commission or indeed the regional commission could support you in the council effectively on climate action. What your priorities are, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for putting your time into coming this afternoon. So it's over to CAC members now then. So having learnt about the Leeds and the Yorkshire and Humber Commission, what do you think they could most likely help in terms of our priorities for the city? And, you know, if you were being asked, where do you think we can be most effective? What suggestions do you have? So I'm going to start with councillor Harrington. Thank you.
It's a little bit like a pre-recording really. It's about communication. You mentioned that you're going to use that computerised system, which is absolutely fabulous. But there are many, many, many people in our wards who still do not, because they don't like it, don't use computers. So how are we actually going to get the message out about all of these fabulous things that are going on and all the projects and encouraging people to join in with it? But are we forgetting the people who just do not use computers and social media? Because I think that's a major problem. It's a major problem for the council as well as other organisations. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to come in on that one?
Yeah, can I just clarify? Do you mean commonplace? Yeah, yeah, we're, and to be honest, we're struggling a little bit with it as well. So I mean, I think the numbers that Leeds council get through on its consultations that it uses on there genuinely, from our experience of using it, are really impressive. So in some ways, take half in that of your own work, albeit it's maybe a bit bleak. It tells it's quite hard. One of the things we've clocked maybe for the regional side is commonplace was designed for hyper-local. You know, you heard Gary talking about it of being, you know, street level, that bus stop doesn't quite work. This bit of park needs to be better, that bin's rubbish, whatever it is. And at a regional level, using it is that people don't necessarily identify as being part of Yorkshire. There's lots of tiers ahead of that. And so thinking in that, at that scale is quite challenging, as is trying to reach five and a half million people as a commission. So that's partly why I want that public affairs group in the next phase is how do we do that effectively? It has to be through others who have the connections in. There's some really interesting points of opportunities, maybe working with Yorkshire Water and other utilities who do work with every household. So how can we capitalise on that? Could we do a joint message there? What about lenders? You know, again, that would be homeowners or mortgage. You know, again, that would be homeowners or mortgage borrowers. But it's a way into households of doing it slightly different way. But digital exclusion is, it's a very real issue. Especially when we're trying to embody the principles of a fair and just transition. So no easy answers, I'm afraid. But we're very mindful of it, certainly. But yeah, we're definitely, it's way off where we want to be on it, a hundred percent.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councillor Carlisle?
Yeah, I think this, this builds neatly on from that. I suppose the thing that strikes me is, yeah, no single organisation is going to do this, but I think maybe you're better positioned to do this than we as the council, which is just, I mean, councillor Harrington mentioned communication, but I think for me, and kind of linked to that, it's very much about the kind of the social and cultural work around building awareness and building enthusiasm for climate action. Like, you know, the council, the council build things and on a good day we do it well. And we, you know, we, again, on a good day, make services work. I don't think the councils may be best positioned to help to shift the imaginative landscape of Yorkshire and kind of just what people are thinking and seeing in, in our communities. And I just, I wonder, I'd be really interested to know if you or like one of your partners were able to do quite an experimental, possibly innovative campaign. Like I've had as part of a conversation a few days ago, it wasn't particularly about climate action, but it was about the work of really trying to map communities and, you know, what are, where are the hairdressers and the cafes and the shops, which are the real, really key nodes in, in diverse communities of Yorkshire. And could you, could you try to identify a hundred such venues? For example, and this is just one example, it's not just all about the hairdressers and the cafes. But yeah, find a hundred such venues and try to find ways to go through those networks and those node people. And also that, as we all know, there'll be those people who are just very well embedded in in a range of communities and other people who everyone knows. And so how can you try to map them and work with them to yeah, change the culture and social imagination around climate change?
It's a, it's a really big challenge, isn't it, that? But it is a challenge that we've got. So we talked quite a bit within the commission itself and within the staff team at the university about the need for social licence around climate action. And again, yeah, in the conversations before this, that theme was live all the way through it. I think it's a great idea. And if you've got, if you've, if you're aware of an example of that kind of thing happening somewhere else, we'd love to hear like see what that is. But if not, we can certainly take it away and explore it. I think, yeah, the, you know, there are, people are trying, aren't they? So I don't know if you've seen the Channel Four campaign. They're doing quite a bit. They've got some pretty direct adverts, I would say it is, or like short clip about climate policy. They've got a new programme out, but we were discussing as well, some flaws in that because of who they've chosen as their figureheads. Doesn't necessarily really help make it feel like it's an everyday thing or for the everyday person. But yet we know from Ipsos survey results and so on that actually the majority of, over more than the majority of people are very concerned about climate and the environment, regardless of political persuasion, regardless of any other sort of diversity criteria. So I, I oscillate between like, have we got a social licence problem? If we know that people are there, why aren't we, you know, why do we feel like we're, we don't have permission? And, you know, why aren't we just acting and doing more, more confidently? So yeah, there's a, there's a confidence piece in there somehow. That's just a reflection, no answer, but great idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Thank you. Just thinking about some of the networks, we work with things like school eco councils and also our neighbourhood networks who work typically with the older members of our communities might be quite useful for reaching out to some of the people who might be excluded from online conversations. I mean, some of the people accessing the neighbourhood networks in particular will be digitally connected, but some won't, but may well have an interest. And those might well be some useful places to connect and draw people together, especially in some of the more outlying communities where it can be harder to reach people. Yeah, just have in mind that a friend's husband's doing some research on, I think it was described as kind of hopefulness in geography, because young people can be quite dismayed when they keep learning about the negatives of climate change and of natural disasters and, and how you harness that to show what is being done and and give them that, that little bit of hope in their learning. That was a slight side thought, it just came to mind from a conversation a couple of days ago, but I hope that makes sense.
It makes total sense. And I think the message of hope for young people is got to be very, very strong. There's, I think, it's a little bugbear of mine about, you know, something I think we're growing, it won't happen in this room, we're a hundred percent sure, but we're grown ups, pass the buck to kids. And I'm pretty sure I was one of those kids way back when. So I'm pretty sure it's our time to, to do something about it. But kids need to be aware of what's going on, of course. But I think that's as much about being able to make sure that they've got the resilience and wherewithal and the right skills to be able to live and thrive in the world that they're going to grow into. As much as it is that then they can sort it out, you know, the sorting out is for us, isn't it? So it's just that dynamic, but hope has got to be part of that. Otherwise, the disenfranchisement and whatever that comes is, is much more, much harder to then overcome as a comms barrier. So yeah, positive messaging, what people can do, that every little bit matters is incredibly important. It's hard, I think, isn't it, when you hear these overwhelming messages to think, well, me not, not driving the car that one mile that one day matters, but it does all add up. The thing I say to people when they, when they challenge that, well, it's just my bit. It's like, well, we're here because of all of those small decisions, actually. So yes, there's big policy stuff, yes, there's place making things. But actually, there's also, we all demand these things and we all behave in this way. And so that needs to change as much as the policy and the place making side of things. Just to, yeah, just in discussion. But thank you very much for the networks. We have been working, should have said, at regional scale, we've been working with the Yorkshire Town and County, like the Local Councils Association as well. So we've had a number of sessions with town and parish councils around, well, South Yorkshire and into North Yorkshire, and we're building the links with East Yorkshire and Humber Councils Association as well. And that's had really good take up, actually, in person workshops and a number of online events. But then, yeah, it's still a bit hit and miss. So I've spoken to some passionate parish councillors in, actually in Leeds who know very, a lot about climate and they hadn't clocked it. So we're still still missing people. It's the nature of it, isn't it? Thanks.
Thank you. Any other members want to make any comments? Councillor Tudor?
This is going to be a bit jumbled, but as a, as a council, we're a big fan of climate action Leeds and very successful in Seacroft, where among a number of other things, we have the wonderful forest garden conceived and built by residents. I don't know if you may have been, if not, please come down. And so stuff at the local micro level is really great. There's a lot of climate hope. A lot of discussion work going on all the time. Because we're interested in residents as councillors in our, in our own areas. So that's a big priority for me. I think that's it.
We'd love to come down and see, yeah.
Thank you. You would be more than welcome. We, we would, well, we're hopefully getting a compost toilet fitted there in the near future. So we might have a grand opening of the compost toilets. Anybody else with any comments or questions? Right, I'll bring Rachel in then.
It's just more a comment. As, as Roz said earlier, yes, we've been, we've been obviously part of the adaptation programme. So I think the key thing is going back to the couple of comments and opportunities for us. What's been really beneficial for us is the collaborative approach, obviously with the other regional councils, being able to share best practice. And it's been really helpful to be able to connect with people who are doing things right that we perhaps hadn't thought of. So I think that's key to keep that going, just from a wider experience perspective. I think in terms of how you can continue to help us is that in terms of lobbying, we, we can, we can lobby to an extent, obviously, as you know, as a local authority, but we, we can't. There's only a certain extent we can lobby to. And sometimes I think it's really key when you've got like minded councils, other organisations, other partnerships who are along the same line, it's stronger to have it from someone like the Climate Commission, because obviously it's a bit more depth behind it. But yeah, and I suppose linking through to what a lot of people have said about communication. Some of these things that we do, we can obviously communicate what we're doing to an extent, but obviously, please continue through different networks to communicate everything we're doing. I know the newsletter goes out from ourselves. But in terms of those of the little networks that perhaps we don't, we haven't quite tuned into yet, obviously, you've got a wider breadth and knowledge of working with them. So for us, it's sort of like, I think they're the main areas that obviously just, we've lost more, even more support with than, than normal. Thank you.
Can I just do a little test, actually? This is following a conversation with Polly, but how many of you have heard of Bristol Leap? Put your hands up. Has anybody, has anybody heard of that? Rachel, okay, it's interesting. So within the commissioners' conversations, Bristol Leap gets a lot of, it has a lot of high regard and rightly so, they're doing really, really brilliant work. But it is, it is a general reflection that I think like they are, they are really well known, aren't they? And they're getting a lot of traction and visibility. But Polly did some calculations and I'd say maybe it's about eight times this investment Leeds has made, eight times the investment that Bristol has on its climate action and measures. And I don't, you know, it's just not getting talked about in the same way in climate, you know, insofar as it matters and climate conversations. But there's just a little bit of learning that we've done over the last couple of months with Polly around actually how this point about just actually saying what we are doing, that's the other thing, is it's not visible. So I think there are people who are like, well, it's pointless because it's not happening. I do care about it. I'll take yes on that Ipsos survey. I'm very concerned about it. But nothing's happening. I don't see any change. So it's become disenfranchised, whereas actually that point about it's not just sort of celebrating, way, Leeds City Council, it's brilliant. It's actually to say, look, you're in Leeds City Council, Leeds City Council really cares and has done all of this amazing stuff. So what you do really matters. You're part of this change. And that's how you get that, I think, that momentum of hope and so on. So that, yeah, I think we went in cash strapped times for any organisation and, and all of them feel it. Local authorities, of course, across the board massively. But that's sort of not, not being able to prioritise the funding on that, I think we, you know, it's, it's something where we're looking at as a team. Like I say, with that public affairs groups, how can we build a collaboration around it? How can we resource it? How can we develop like comms messages that you could, that have a core message, but then you can tailor it around and you know that in confidence, all other fifteen local authorities and the big four accountancy firms and whatever, they're all using the same data or evidence and just slightly spinning it for their audience to get the message out. And then you can do that with maybe two or three messages. Wait until you start hearing it back and then you can move on to the next ones. So that's the idea. But I just, there's something very important about celebrating success.
Thank you. Councillor Bowden wants to come in.
Yeah, I think it kind of highlights the reason why it's actually a really good thing that we've done the Carbon Disclosure Project. I think the highlighting is a good buy-in for a lot of residents. And, and obviously a thank, a thank you to the chair because, you know, you graciously attended a meeting for the Labour Party members in Round A Ward. And we've had a number of discussions anyway about, about the strides that we're doing as a city. But the members come away every single time and not just members, but when I, you know, on the doorstep, doorstep speaking to residents or out in the community, speaking about the work that we do and the scope of it. It really does get people engaged more so, not the, not the opposite. Their response isn't, oh, well, the city's taking care of it. So I can just sit to the side. If anything, they want to do more when they hit, when they hear about what we've done. And they want to get more of that, that buy-in, especially when, you know, we, we've mentioned it before, but the great success our city has done in regards to installing like ground source heat pumps on, on our community centres and our, and especially actually when it comes to our schools as well. It's been a really, a real positive. And again, I've only ever had more questions from residents and members say, what, what can I do more of? So yeah, I just want to highlight what you're saying. Actually, when we do really promote what we, what we do, I do think the acknowledgement, acknowledgement from the Carbon Disclosure Project is a real benefit to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments or questions? Okay, thank you for that. Thank you for your contributions. Just as I draw it to a close, when, when I looked through the asks that you had of us, so some of the things I, I came up with were sharing best practice, both at a micro level. So that goes to the kind of what is Seacroft doing? Can we amplify that across the city? But also us learning from what's happening in other parts of Yorkshire. Connecting stakeholders in terms of, well, here's a good idea. So can you now make contact with this person and drive it forward in another place? Networking, amplifying the voice that we, we have re-comms. So it's all come up in, in the say, in the discussion. So, you know, hopefully that's useful for you in, in that we're, we're all kind of giving the same messages. The only thing that I had on my list that I don't think has come up in the discussion, or though it is kind of linked, is the idea of you, you've got all the resources of the university with a lot of research going on. It would be great to link that to some of the, the really local climate projects that are happening in, in our wards. And I'm sure, you know, everybody could give you examples of those who would maybe really benefit from that expertise. For example, one of the things we tried to do in, in Climate Action Seacroft was our own research project. And it kind of stumbled a little bit and it would have been great to be able to pick the brains of, of people who, who live in that world. So that was the only other thing I had. But hopefully you've got plenty to take away from us in terms of the, the work on, on comms, the work on networks. I liked the idea of message for hope and building enthusiasm because you're right. And councillor Bowden's absolutely right. Whenever I talk about the work that we're doing as a city, it does generate enthusiasm. But people always say, wow, we didn't know about this. And I think that's an ask for all of us to, to improve that, that kind of communication message. But it is a, it's a big piece of work to do. Is that, has that been useful for you in terms of what we've fed back?
Yeah, a hundred percent. Very, well, very confirming. And we look forward to working with you on it over the coming years. I think it is for years. It's, it's not a quick fix, is it sadly? So yeah, we'll keep trying and learning and adapting. And we're happy to come back and talk to you anytime or drop into working groups or whatever. Just, we're here. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you for attending today. And yes, you would be very welcome. We've got four working groups that I'm, I'm sure between us we can address various aspects of the work that you wanted to do. So thank you very much. Thank you for, for joining us. Thank you for members and officers and everybody who's put time into making today's meeting work. I appreciate you all. Our next meeting is on Friday, the fifteenth of December. And it is once again an in-person meeting. So I look forward to seeing everybody's proper 3D faces in person. Thank you. Thank you very much.